Join us in a moment. Would you call the role, please, for the afternoon session?
Saltzman, Novick.
Here.
Fritz.
Here.
Fish.
Hales.
Here. Welcome, everyone, and welcome to the time-certain items that we have queued up this afternoon. We'll start, of course, with 10:31.
Equitable Contracting and Purchasing Commission Presentation to City Council.
Well, I'm pleased to call forward Director James and soon some folks in the community that have been working really hard on this issue. I guess here's how I would introduce it. This is important work fervently believed in by all of us in this community, incompletely accomplished with learning as we go along. And that, to me, is why we're here and why it's important that we hear from the Equitable Contracting Commission today and as well as staff from the Office of Equity and Human Rights and our director about how we are making this a city of opportunity for everyone. That's the goal. We're not there yet. How do we get there? How do we get there sooner and better than we have so far? That's why we're here. So Director James, thank you very much for your work in supporting this effort, and we look forward to hearing from you today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it. It's my pleasure this afternoon to be here and introduce the report from the Equitable Contracting and Purchasing Commission. As you know, in February 2015, the City Council established the Commission on Equitable Contracting and Purchasing, designed to increase the utilization of minorities and women-owned businesses in the city, in city contracting, and increase the inclusion of minorities and women in the workforce as well on city projects. It was originally housed and staffed in the Bureau of Internal Business Services, and then the Commission was transferred to the Office of Equity and Human Rights and held its first meeting under that umbrella in June of this year. I would be remiss, however, if I didn't point out that there was no staff position associated with that transfer, so I really do want to thank my staff for stepping up to ensure that the support was provided as effectively as possible. And the report that you see, as always, Jeff Selby and his expertise in preparing such documents. I know nobody else gets to steal him from me, but he has been the one who put this document together in the lovely fashion that it is.
I might just interrupt for a second. It wasn't, I didn't understand when we looked at the budget that the staff wasn't, no staff or money for staff was being transferred over to you.
Correct. There was a, there was a small budgetary piece that came with it to fund the commission itself in some sense, to have a budget for the commission, but there was no staff that associated with it.
When we, maybe this is under the commissionable address. I thought we established the staffing when we established the committee. So do go on. I think that's a...
Some funding, but no additional staff as yet.
Correct. Correct. So in the time that it's been within the Office of Equity and Human Rights, commissioners have received data on minorities and women in contracting and workforce, thanks to the mayor's office help, Diana Nunez specifically and Ben Mauro for helping to disaggregate much of the data that you will see this afternoon. The data came over in an aggregate form. It was not disaggregated specifically by race and gender, nor by contract, within the, by individual projects. And so Ben from the mayor's office literally went through project by project and disaggregated that by comparing, by comparing the data of certified firms to the data of who was working on particular projects. So was able to disaggregate that specifically. But the, as I'm sure you know, that procurements, the platform that they use is not able to do it in that same way. So it has to be done, it had to be done manually. So the commission, after receipt of the data, really wanted to live up to its mission of providing guidance and advice to the city council. And they're here before you today to offer their advice and counsel based on the data that they've received and have conclusions and recommendations based upon that information. There are currently six commissioners. There are then three open seats on the commission. We'll be moving to fill those within the next 30 to 60 days, and we'll be coming back before you with names of individuals that we would ask you to seat on the commission itself. If you've had a chance to look through the data, I mean, it will be certainly presented to you and explained to you, but I think the data will speak for itself. We do have a long way to go. There is, there have been quite a few ordinances and resolutions put in place to address the issue of minority women-owned business contracting and workforce. We still have a long way to go, and I think the presentation today will give you some recommendations on how to continue to address and improve that, as well as their thoughts and conclusions on why we are here, where we are, I guess. So I would, at this time, introduce Commissioner Maurice Raming, who will begin the presentation, and then he will then just introduce his fellow commissioners as the presentation continues, and we can certainly come back for any questions that you may have for me.
Great. Thank you very much. So good afternoon and welcome.
Thank you, commissioners and mayor, for having us here. One of the things that I want to introduce you to is Nikki. Nikki's going to actually run through this project as far as the data points. She's an assistant project manager. She works underneath Ally as an assistant project manager. And so this data, it's her future. This is what's going to affect her as she goes through her professional career in this industry. So I want to just kick it off to her and let her lead in this proposal.
Great. Some of the council might not know who Ally is.
Oh, Ally O'Neil, which is, she heads up our construction division and also is my wife, so that's who she works for.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here today. Okay. So Resolution 36718 was created, created the Fair Contracting Forum Reporting. It's one of the earliest resolutions and was established to support, promote, and promote accountable, fair, and effective contracting practices. It provides, its purpose is to provide oversight and invite greater community input regarding the city's procurement practices. Based on the data we've, we have here today, it's clear that inequality hasn't changed in the construction industry and perhaps has gotten worse. The FCF has not had a positive effect. Maurice, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, one of the things I would say is that we created these resolutions, we passed the resolutions, but the, the impact, we're actually going in the wrong direction. The impact hasn't been noted. So it's glad to see the ECPC as a part to be able to identify this for you.
Resolution 3675 established the Minority Evaluation Board. It was established to make sure minorities and women had a say in the evaluation process. At least one member must be a minority selected on a panel of five or fewer, and three minorities on a panel of nine to 11. Now, I just want to imagine if the whole board included only minorities and women. Perhaps these workforce and contract numbers would look a lot different. We often have all-white male committees stating that they represent all of Portland, and no one bats an eye. Why don't we change that up? Do you have anything else to add? Okay. Okay, so one of the most in-depth resolutions is 36944, which includes many aspects, including contract workforce. It established a 27 aspirational goal for minorities and women on city-funded construction projects for apprentices and journey-level workers combined. Already, that's an issue since it doesn't split the goals between journey level and apprentices, as well as minorities and women. Okay, as you can see by this pie chart, white men strongly outnumber all other races. And we're going to take another, a closer look at year 2013 to 14. There is a little mistake there, but it's year 2013 to 14. Okay, there are 2.5 more white men than all other categories put together. The only category that comes close are Latino men, and they are still outnumbered five to one. And let's look at the gender gap. Altogether, there were 9,306 men compared to 166 women. That's more than 56 times more men than women. Okay, looking at some of these bar graphs here, Asian, Latino, Latina, Native American, white women all dropped from the first and second year in 2014 to 2015. Most notably, though, are African-American men and women. They actually drop consistently each year. I would also like to point out that for African-American women, most of them are laborers instead of carpenters or mechanical or some of those other more better, better-paid jobs in the industry. And most of them are also apprentices. Many of the hours come to less than a day of actual work. So yes, the numbers are there, but the hours are laughable. The same goes for African-American men, although it gets a little better. For example, in carpentry, there are, there were two African-American men on the journey level, and they worked a total of 21.5 hours, which comes to less than three days. The rest were apprentices, and they worked more or less than a couple of weeks. So even though they are, minorities are there willing to work, minorities and minority women especially are not being utilized throughout the project. These, these numbers are horrifically low, and most of that, most of the diversity is contributed to CBA projects, which we'll look at in a minute. Without those projects, these numbers would be much, much worse. Furthermore, everyone is spread out on multiple projects. Imagine being the only black woman on the job. You have no support, no one to back you up if you have a complaint. If the city and the various committees that are in place supposedly to support you aren't doing their job, it's hard to continue in a field, even if it's good pay. Do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, one of the things I'd like to point out is that on most of the construction projects, minorities are relegated to a shovel, a brim, or a flag. And this is unfortunate, but the reality, when we started to look at the data and we looked at the utilization, when you did have utilization, that's where minorities and women had the opportunities to work. It wasn't in the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing trades, the carpentry trades, or the concrete work. It was those types of jobs, and that's reflected in the data provided by the city.
Okay, another aspect of Resolution 36944 is prime contractor development. The city resolved to accept recommendations for a strategy to increase minority-owned, women-owned, and emerging small, small-business utilization in city contracting. Notice that they say "accept recommendations, not make recommendations." They also resolved to do a business development course for program participants, which anecdotally usually is a workshop on how to use QuickBooks. There has to be a better, more effective way to use this resolution. Okay, let's look at the charts. Let's look at OBE, MBEs, and WBEs. In 2011, 2012, OBE had 190 contracts, WBE had 20 contracts, and MBE had 16 contracts. The numbers go up marginally in 2012, 2013, but get very interesting in 2014, 2015. As you can see, MBE had 57 contracts, OBE had 942 contracts, and WBE had 88 contracts. While these M and WBE contracts appear to increase exponentially due to the city's resolutions or whatnot, if you look at OBE's contracts, actually, they increased from 190 to 942. If you compare OBE to WBE, OBE had nine times more contracts in 2011, 2012, and 10 times more contracts in 2014, 2015. Compared to MBE, OBE had 12 times more contracts in 2011, 2012, than 16 times more contracts in 2014, 2015. Year 2014, 2015 could have just had more contracts altogether, and MBE and WBE actually fell behind in comparison. Everyone's numbers may have increased, but so did the gap. Maurice, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I think that, I'm hoping that this resonates, that the fact is, is that there's more work happening out there. Majority firms and emerging small-business firms, they're getting quite a bit more work, and the opposite is happening for women and minorities, both in the workplace, whether it's contracting, whether it's workforce numbers. We continue to see this lack of utilization of minorities through the, after the disparity study. We still see that drop, and so we're getting to that point where it's getting really close to when we talk about 22 hours utilized by African-American carpenters, journeymen carpenters, when we talk about 20 hours utilized by, or zero hours utilized for journeymen women. Yeah, they're out there. Your study, and actually the data shows that they actually went to work, whether or not they were laid off, left, but we see this consistent pattern of a journeymen female getting on a job site, having four hours worth of work, and then is no longer on the job site. African-Americans having three hours, three days worth of work, and then letting, let go or something. So I think it, the ECPC wants to look deeper into this because, and because it's so dramatic decrease that it's impacting.
Who decides whether which of the people who show up for the job get four hours of work versus a full day of work?
And so because we're not, in my opinion, holding the contractors and subcontractors accountable, what happens is you have, in my, in my opinion, microaggressions that might occur on the job site, which then if you're a minority or a woman, you're like, okay, I am not welcome here. So either they leave and quit and go to work somewhere else where they're more accepted, or you have foremen and superintendents that make the determination that that person isn't worthy to be on that job site, and so then they're let go. But that, we're seeing that pattern, so we're not seeing that there, there's not an availability. There is an availability of minorities and women ready to work. What's happening is they're not having the opportunity to work on city projects.
And so what you're saying is that the company that's doing the work is primary, or first responsible for who's got, but also the city is responsible because we're not holding the prime contractor, the overseer accountable?
Yeah, we're not holding them responsible from the resolution that we passed, 36944. This is 27% utilization for apprenticeship and journeymen. I think that's where the ECPC would like to try to help, to make sure that all contractors, both prime and sub, are held responsible for some sort of either retention or training to actually be able to have a more acceptable utilization of women and minorities.
Okay, okay. Then next aspect of Resolution 36944 is subcontractor utilization. It created an inclusion plan for subcontractors to participate on city-funded projects. Administrative Rule 1.23 added more practices and procedures for implementing the subcontractor equity program. Basically, it doesn't really give specific ways to get more minority and women subcontractors. It says things like "set goals for DMW/ESB subcontractor utilization," but doesn't actually give a goal, and "encourage contractors to diversify their subcontractor utilization," but has no way to enforce that. It relies on the belief that all contractors are actually interested in increasing diversity, when the more likely scenario is that they're interested in increasing their bottom line, because let's be real, they're businessmen. The number of contracts increased from year to year, but so did the gap, just like with prime contractors. And, sorry, and there's another, this should be 2014, 2015. OBE's overall dollar amount was about seven times higher than MBE and 11.5 times higher than WBE, whereas in 2012, 2013, it was only three to four times higher respectively. Maurice, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, and again, you know, at one point, we have to ask ourselves what's going on. We have the prime contracting program, that you look at the numbers from when it was conceived to where it's at, and you see a reduction in minority participation. When you look at the workforce numbers and you see a reduction from the disparity study and the resolution of utilization in high-skill jobs. So we're seeing this pattern, and at some point, we have to ask, is this institutional racism? Is this contractors discriminating against women and minorities? We have to ask that question. Then if we ask, if we're honest with the question, then we actually have to look and say, what are the real solutions to these problems? And not just create another resolution or create another plan, but actually sit down and say, how do we fix this problem? Because we are going in the wrong direction, and we actually have to ask ourselves that question.
Okay. Another aspect of Resolution 36, sorry, 39644 involves professional, technical, and expert services. It requires bureaus to solicit from at least four qualified consultants, and half must be from minority-women ESB firms. The aspirational goal was increased from 15 to 20%. And most of the minority consultants are outreach coordinators who specialize in getting minority and women involvement, and so far, it seems ineffective. Do you have anything? Okay, another aspect of Resolution 36944 is contractor prequali, sorry, prequalification. It was created to eliminate the prequalification for construction projects under $250,000, and unfortunately, it, the issue has still not been resolved. So, and that's the last, last resolution for that. For the Community Benefits Agreement, this is Resolution 36954, and it was designed to increase opportunities for minority women and disadvantaged-owned businesses. The Portland Water Bureau piloted this program on the Kelly Butte Reservoir and interstate maintenance facility renovation projects. It has been a powerful tool promoting the inclusion of underrepresented people. Unfortunately, the only data we have comparing CBA projects versus non-CBA projects is for year 2012, 2013. But as you can see, the numbers increased for CBA projects versus non-CBA, and it also has DBE, which already automatically adds a 23, 23 projects to their numbers. And then also, most of the CBA contracts awarded to MBE subcontractors were to flagging, trucking, and landscaping companies. Very few contracts were awarded in fills that are generally better paid and have more of an imprint on the building. Also, each CBA project lists the amount of hours worked by women and minorities, not just how many of each group there were. It's the only report that gives a clear breakdown of the data, and it shows that they were utilized throughout the project and much longer than a couple of days. As mentioned earlier, these two projects greatly contributed to the workforce numbers, and without them, the numbers would look much, much worse. Maurice, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I'd just say, and I know that there's a CBA meeting coming up, I believe, next week, but if you remove that, you all of a sudden see almost a non-utilization of women and minorities. The gap is that great. The reason why you see such a drastic drop last year is because the CBA projects are winding down, and so the reason why we report out that so few hours, we're talking less than 100 hours for African-Americans, we're talking, I think, 49 on the carpentry side. Why is, why are those numbers so low? It's because there's not, no one monitoring, looking at, and trying to make sure that there's true participation. It's, for me, it's truly heartbreaking, because I come from a family of affordable housing. I got my opportunity in a CTE program for electoral contracting, or electrical. I was able to start my own business. We were from a poor family. This was our outlet to be able to have me get a pathway out of poverty. We're denying people that pathway when we're not monitoring this stuff. It's truly unfortunate. I hope that I could move this commission and this mayor to do something about this. It's been too long. We can't... We can't have another disparity study that's going to show zero results. You know, there are people out there looking to work on these jobs right now. There's tons of construction right now. I hope that this resonates with you, this opportunity that we have to move people out of poverty and not just to continue this pathway in this direction that we're going.
So, looking at the data that you just showed us, would it be fair to draw the conclusion that when the city is in charge of managing the project, the numbers are better and that women and minorities are used for more days? Is that what I heard correctly?
What's, what's happening is, well, the only real tracking that occurred that I could see is through the CBA projects that show that, yeah, the Labor Management Oversight Committee that was able to do course corrections, and if a woman or minority was removed from the project, there was organizations that could track those people and make sure that they could actually continue into the program. And so there was a lot of tracking and a lot of guidance to basically help the city meet those goals through the community, through the pre-apprenticeship programs, through the community organizations. So it was a system that was put together to create these outcomes. When that went away, that's when those people...
Sorry, I didn't, so that would mean that you have both an employer who really wants to do the right thing and the community partnerships that can help find the people to, play somebody who left.
Yeah.
How much does the hiring hall process where, in, particularly in the construction trade unions, where there's a seniority system, how does that play into which individuals get to work on a job?
And so one of the things is with the, the hiring halls, and they'll, I think they would say the same thing, where they could diversify, and they've, through, through different mechanisms, they said, okay, we could diversify, and they have. The hiring halls actually have the most diverse workforce, the bully reports, which I'd be happy to share with you guys. The fact is, is that the contractor is ultimately responsible for hiring those people. So if you hire, if you have a contractor, that the minute I walk in the room to go to work, and they see the color of my skin, and they let me go, and I only have two hours, the hall can't call that contractor and say, hey, you need to put this person back to work. That's a discretion of the contractor. And so although you have union halls that, in my opinion, are doing their best job to make sure that they have piercing of the books, so that minorities, if I request a minority, and the owners request a minority, I can actually get, that minority might be lower down on the books, but actually can come to the front of the line to work for me. Because they're doing innovative stuff like that, they're actually proactive. But at the end of the day, if we do not hold our contractors accountable, or subcontractors accountable, the unions could do all the work in the world, and they'll have 50% minorities, and those 50% will stay on the books, and the majority of people will continue to work.
Thank you.
You have any other questions for us?
Other questions, reactions? Thank you.
I believe that recommendations are coming next.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, who's next, please? Come on up. Andrew, come on up. Good afternoon, welcome.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Andrew McGough with Work Systems, member of ECPC.
And Michael Birch with the Carpenters, Commissioner, ECPC.
So maybe I'll kick us off. We're here to just provide our perspective on some recommendations to hopefully address some of the challenges that we've seen, either through the data or just sort of our, you know, historical underperformance around these issues. So I'm not really going to read through these, but one of the things that was pretty clear as a, as a new commissioner, as a new committee, is a lot of the workforce data is, we think, collected pretty sporadically. There's not a consistent methodology to collect it, there's not a consistent array of elements that we're looking at. So one of our recommendations is to really create a standard template that helps us track a variety of workforce data, and then hold all contractors to reporting that data. We think that there are easy ways to do this. You know, we actually have a tracking system that we use for workforce-related stuff that ties into the unemployment insurance system. We'd be happy to sit down and figure it out if that were an issue for the city. But just kind of looking at, what are those elements that are essential to not only understanding the race and gender of people, but what occupations are they in? How many hours are they working? Are they actually seeing increase in their wages? Are they moving up the scale? So that's sort of, I think, our initial recommendation.
In, in view of the data that we've received through the ECPC, it's pretty clear what has occurred since the disparity study. And we made some pretty practical recommendations that we think would be easy to implement if there was a desire on the part of the city and the bureaus to implement the changes that we recommended, and we think that they will produce results. We spent quite a bit of time and energy and resources in trying to come up with some valuable ways to affect the contracting and the workforce, that the city has their hands, their arms wrapped around, and we think these are good recommendations.
Are you going to put them back up?
Yeah, keep going, please.
Yeah.
There was a flash, hope we lost them.
Oh, you lost them.
So, were you done, Andrew?
Yeah, no, I can, so, our second recommendation, just sort of looking at, you know, trying to address that issue about, we do pretty well, it appears, on getting people into entry-level positions, apprenticeship-level positions. The real challenge is to help them transition to journey-level status. So creating some retention programs, some advancements programs in partnership with either labor unions or other organizations, contractors who are onsite to help new entrants into these professions transition up, and looking at effective strategies to do that, we think would be a smart thing to pursue moving forward. And this is one that's sort of near and dear to my own heart. I've, I've talked to you, I think, on multiple occasions. You know, we have a public workforce system in the city of Portland that sees probably about 40,000 people a year. Those are unemployed people and underemployed people, and unfortunately, it means that they tend to be more diverse than the general population. So it's a great place to go and recruit potential candidates for training or for jobs. And so assuring some connection to that system, I think, leverages the resources that are already in there, and also presents an opportunity to combine resources to create a much better opportunity for people who are interested in pursuing these, these kinds of positions.
Andrew, can I, can I just try to restate that a little bit?
Sure.
Based on our conversation? So what we want to get away from is the case where someone gets a job, does one project, and then they're back on the street.
Right.
We want to use a broader regional framework to be able to have people go from job to job to job where they're growing their skills and having a chance to have continuous employment. Is that, is that the concept?
That, that's certainly embedded in these, yes. Because it's not only about trying to be successful on a job. I mean, the challenge here is you have to be successful on multiple jobs, and creating those, that connectivity, both on a regional level, and then also, I think, on the training and support level, is what, you know, people need in order to transition up.
And before you move on to question number three, what issues do we need to consider? Because you said where appropriate to direct them to use our partner at WorkSource. Are there some technicalities when, when we can and cannot do that?
I think, you know, it depends if, if, if the relationship, if there's a lot of people on the bench, that will probably need to be negotiated, you know, project by project. And I think it might vary by occupation as well. So you may have a surplus in, in, in one occupation but a shortage in another, or you may have high levels of minority and women represented in one occupation, not another. So it's just trying to figure that out. That's, I think, what was meant by that.
So you're suggesting that we could, on some public projects, say, you need to start with this partner of ours, and then you can go to the others? Because you think that that would be a possibility?
I think that's absolutely possible.
Thank you.
The current workforce plan actually has, I think, I believe, a writer in it that says if you cannot find who you're looking for at the hall, that you go to, you know, these programs in the community that are state-approved pre-apprenticeship programs. So it would be pretty simple, I think, to add workforce.
So could we switch that to say, you start with WorkSource, and then you can go to the hiring hall?
I believe you could.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I believe you could. And you asked Maurice about, earlier, about whether or not we could provide, the union halls could provide workers to jobs. We, we can pierce the list. There's language in our agreements that will allow us to pierce the list when the requirements are on the job, requiring ethnic minorities, women, apprentices, journey-level workers. We can meet those requirements. The issue is having, like Maurice said, requirements of the contractors, not aspirational goals, but the cooperation of the contractor and real goals that we can assist them in meeting.
Thank you.
Finally, you know, I mean, I think, really making sure that if we're going to invest in training, we're investing in organizations that are successful in providing that training for women and minorities. And then I think, sort of, this underlines, I think, all of the recommendations of the council, is that we want to use ECPC as a mechanism to sort of oversee the resolutions and the progress on those resolutions, because we think that that's an appropriate role, and it's one that we think we could do effectively and be, you know, the kind of resource that I think was envisioned through the creation of that, of that body.
Gentlemen, I have just two questions about your recommendations. So I guess one of the things that we're going to have to evaluate is get some feedback from procurement and Christine, and, and find out how this aligns with stuff we're doing, how it doesn't. And we also need some legal feedback, to the extent we're going to be trying to, when you say pierce, when you say, for example, pierce, pierce the list at a union hiring hall, I mean, now we're, we're getting into an area where there are some potentially, some legal issues. So have your recommendations been, been reviewed and by procurement and by, and by legal? But let's start with procurement. Have we got any feedback from our procurement team about both the recommendations in substance and in terms of timeline for implementation?
Not to my knowledge, no.
This is...
Not to my knowledge, but a piece of your question has to do with, have we gotten feedback from procurement?
Yeah.
We pierced the list on the two pilot projects. Procurement was at the table.
Yeah, and I'm talking about overall recommendations.
Right, okay. So, no, these are recommendations that we've created.
And have, have these recommendations been forwarded to them for some comment?
I don't know, I have to ask.
Ask the chair.
Not yet.
Not yet.
That can happen.
Yeah.
That sounds like the next step.
Yeah.
At the last ECPC meeting, these recommendations were discussed, though Christine was there and heard them, but there was no formal consent for comment.
Okay. So could I just have, I, I concur with your recommendations, and particularly the one of having the commission oversee these issues, and I'd like you to add one that I would like you to oversee, because you said oversee the recommendations on resolutions and ordinances. Mr. Birch will remember that when we were doing paid sick time, there was a discussion in Portland as to whether the building trials in the hiring halls would be included or not, and they were under the Portland system, and then the state exempted them. So I would like to know, what are the numbers for how much sick time both male and female members of the building trials from the hiring hall are claiming? And I'd also like to know, given the issue of paid parental leave, which can perhaps count as sick time for a little bit, how much, how many men and women take time away from the hiring hall after the addition of a child to their family? And is there a disparity between male and female? Thank you.
Trying to find that out. Okay, so if you, give me another minute.
Please.
I'd like to read a statement. This is my statement, by the way. It's not the ECPC. I'd like to first thank the mayor and the city council for the opportunity to present today on these critically important issues. I also commend Mayor Hales and the council for creating the Equitable Contracting and Purchasing Commission. When African-American journeymen show up on the job site, are turned away by their contractor, given show-up pay for two hours, then they show up as, then that show-up pay is used to calculate percentages of minority workforce participation on city contracting projects, the system is clearly broken. When, as in 2014, 15, annual participation of African-American workers in city construction projects is less than 5% of the hours worked by white males. For example, 286 hours for African-American males compared to 6,020 for white males. Clearly, the system is broken. When workforce utilization for all categories of minority and women workers shows a steady decline, when minority contractors get the smallest sliver of the contracting pie, clearly the system is broken. Mayor Hales, city council, these are not distant memories from the 50s or 60s. These are realities from the last five years. Obviously, the work of the ECPC is needed more now than ever. I am, however, gravely concerned that the commitment of some, of the work of the ECP is doubtful at best. Since our founding, the ECPC has struggled to be taken seriously, not only by the bureaus that are charged with overseeing, but by members of the council itself. We have been stonewalled by bureaus when it came to the provision of the information that unveiled the facts I just mentioned. We have been circumvented when particular projects were deemed by certain decision-makers to be inappropriate for our review. We have been provided insufficient resources to conduct the work that is necessary for us to meet our charge, and when we have been consulted at the 11th hour, after all decisions regarding certain procedures or projects have essentially been made by the very bureaus that resist our work. There have been, there have even been threats and efforts by some decision-makers to disband the commission. These challenges have led some commissioners to resign in frustration. We're down three. However, I cannot turn my back on this work. I have spent most of my working adult life attempting to eradicate opportunity disparities for minority workers, and the need is simply too great, the stakes too high, for me to quit, regardless of the roadblocks and frustrations. Let me be clear. My goal as a commissioner on the ECPC is to transform the way Portland does business. I believe Mayor Hales that this is also the reason you created the ECPC, and plainly we have seen, there is still, there was, plainly as we have seen, there will be resistance to that sort of change. Overcoming that resistance will require political courage and leadership. Mayor, you told us that you want to make the ECPC truly work and not just a matter of appearances. I'm calling on both you and other commissioners to renew your commitment to the ECPC and our mission by doing the following. Giving us genuine oversight authority and provide us with sufficient dedicated staff and resources necessary to make that oversight a reality. Two, include us in the policy discussions from the beginning rather than leaving us out of the room, or handing us systems that have already been developed without our input. And three, accept and implement our recommendations even where, perhaps especially where it's inconvenient or requires upsetting the status quo. There are examples in the city of what can happen when the stakeholders and policymakers work together, are committed to doing the right thing, and are given the right tools to get the work done. We can overcome the living history of racism. It will require hard work and dedication and acknowledging some difficult truths, but it's only by doing so that we will ever be able to become the city that we hope to be and the city that we hold ourselves out as. Otherwise, business will continue as usual, and the promise of economic opportunity for the city's minority communities will remain an illusion. Show-up pay for turned-away workers will be counted as utilization, minority workforce hours will continue to, will continue their steady decline, and the overwhelming amount of contracting opportunities will go to male, white firms. Thank you for listening and having us here today.
Thank you. Thank you for your recommendations.
Just one, a question I have in addition to that. Part of it is the, the data keeping and the accuracy and such.
Right.
Do the employees or the apprentices and journeymen who show up on the job get sent home after two hours? Do they report back to some, to the hiring hall or to somebody that that happened?
It depends. It depends on how long that apprentice has been around. If they have a mentor, they report it. If they don't, they just put their name back on the list, and they all go out again.
And how did we get, how did you get to the numbers of hours worked? Where did that data come from?
The data came from the, the city's report through the ECPC.
So the city requires that, and that's how we get that data? So the city requires that, and that's how we get that data?
The city, the data is reported to the city by the general contractor.
Right.
It comes in disaggregated, and then it's aggregated. So the only way to get it back is to have ECPC's office to disaggregate the data, and that's how we find out.
And with your commissioners, you're all active in business. And I'm concerned that we may have a different kind of version of Portland polite here, that you probably know if there's companies that are more likely to have those kind of practices than others. And I hope that the commission will be helping the council know what the problems are and how we can add more things into the list of things that we require so that we give bonus points to companies that are better about using minorities, and perhaps demerits or something else for those who are not. And so I know that's a very complex thing that I'm asking you, but I do hope that that's part of how we can work together better as we continue to struggle with these issues.
From my point of view, we'd love to.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Okay, who's next, please, panel?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, and welcome.
My name is Chor Fricki. I'm here to present recommendations for PTE, Professional Technical Expert Services. I don't know if you have the slide up. Before I dive into the recommendations, just want to say one thing. When you look at the data from 2012 up to 2014, or whatever it is, I mean, the amount of work that the city has put out is like quadrupled or five times increased. So I think we're seeing a situation where we're starting to max out on what PTE firms are available to do that work. And when the comment about the outreach efforts, I think they're doing a remarkable job. It's just that there's not enough firms out there, and we need to be doing more than we can to find those firms that can do the work.
Can I ask you a question? You wear a lot of hats. In what capacity are you testifying today?
As, I'm on the commission.
As a commissioner?
As a commissioner, yeah.
So these are your views, not anyone you represent?
Um, no. But I can tell you from my own experience, it's hard to find people out there to do the work. So, just finding the professional staff, everybody's really busy, you know. But in terms of the recommendations, we'd like to see a hard goal set in terms of subcontracting, set at the same as construction at 15%. And even that said, I think the goal should be pushed more toward minority contractors and women-owned businesses. Because of the ESB, as you look at the data, the ESB numbers are actually, there are more contracts going to ESBs than there are individually the minority businesses and the women-owned businesses. Reviser provide a better definition of qualifications for small business in PTE contracting. I think that relates more to how the individual, under 50,000 contracts are done. We don't know how the individual PMs or the bureaus decide who they're going to send out the RFPs to in terms of which minority businesses or which MBEs, women-owned businesses are qualified to get those RFPs. A disaggregate point system provided for minority participation. What we'd like to see there is a separate point system where the minority and women businesses, their points are separated out from the ESBs. Right now, everything's combined. That way, we can see how the businesses themselves can prove themselves out and be shown that, yeah, we're focusing on minority and women businesses here. Require prompt pay for MNWB professional services firms. And that goes to say, I know there's been issues with the new system the city's implemented, but even with that, we're seeing prime contractors not paying subcontractors within as long as 60 days. So, and sometimes it's gone up to 90 days. A developed contracting utilization and tracking system for small business participation and awards is prime and subcontractors. We'd just like to see better data. It's not consistent, and in some cases, it doesn't appear to be complete, because I'm sure each bureau is keeping track of their own PTE contracting. It needs to be brought together, and somehow we can see that, where all the contracts are actually going. And not in terms of just subcontracts, but prime contracting as well. Provide ECPC a city project list of future contracting opportunities. That's just, we'd like to see what's coming down the pike earlier. So that way, in this business with PTE, you really need to know what's coming down the road early on so that you can start doing your networking. So, that's all I have. Is there anything, Maurice?
No. So we sit on the same committee, that's why I'm up here twice. But I think if we're able to track this stuff, and if the ECPC's given the data, we can actually do monthly data, we can do course corrections, and actually help advise procurement on some of the things that they can do. One of the things that I tell you, Mr. Mayor, is that, you know, we want to be the aspirin, we don't want to be the headache. You know, we want, we want to help. We're not here to beat anyone up. We just, we want to try to work to get this problem fixed.
Questions?
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you. Just a couple of closing comments, if I might. I think you clearly heard the conversations around data. What you have in front of you is data that was, in some sense, difficult to gather because of the time, effort, and energy it takes to have it done by hand. The software program that the city has in procurement isn't able to do it. I think as Commissioner Birch said, the data comes in disaggregated. Then it goes into the city's software program and becomes aggregated all over again because of the way the software works. It doesn't have a place for all of the different demographics that come into it. And so I know that procurement is working hard to change that system, or at least end up with a system that would be able to be compatible with the state in a similar way that holds that disaggregated data, but now it doesn't have it. And so that makes it much more difficult. And then when you also consider that the data comes from different places, you have data that comes from PDC, you have data that comes from housing, and you have data that comes from the bureaus that go into procurement. All of that is data that we have to go and get. It doesn't come into one place. We have to go get it. I've had to ask housing and PDC and others for their data. And then it comes in, and we have to then, again, ask them to do more with the data. Do you have the staff capacity to disaggregate the data? If not, then we have to then try to find, the goodness of the mayor's staff who has time, if they do. So it just becomes difficult. And if we're going to do this well, we need to know what the data looks like. And we don't have the best way to do that. We don't even have really the good way to do that. We just have the way that we make happen to do that. To Commissioner Fritz's point about can we begin to address or provide criteria by which we evaluate contractors who aren't doing what we would hope they would do. In the prequal, quick prequalification process, there is, there is a criteria among many that allows us to take a look at how the contractors may be working with minority women-owned businesses. It is one of many criteria, but we don't have this data to evaluate. We don't know what their workforce looks like specifically when the prequal application comes to us. Then it becomes anecdotal, anecdotal conversation by the project managers who work in the various infrastructure bureaus, but they don't know this level of detail about the workforce, about whether somebody's come for two hours and been sent home. They don't have that data. And so, again, there's no, there's no efficient way to gather that, to use it sometimes when we need to do that. So just to underscore the importance of the data. You know, again, one of my favorite quotes is, quotes is that organizations move in the direction of the questions they ask. We can ask the questions all day, but if we can't get the answers because the data is not available, or we have to work too hard to get it, we're not going to get where we need to get. So with that, I will pause and ask if you have any questions with me, and if not, then certainly ask you to accept the report of the ECPC.
Dante, I may have some questions, but first, how many people signed up?
Three.
I wonder if we could hear the comments?
All right, let's do that, then call you back up, Dante. Thank you.
Use that to inform our questions.
All right, let's do that, please.
Please come on up. Nate McCoy, James Posey, and Matt Momshiner.
Good afternoon. Welcome, Nate. Go ahead, Nate. I think you were first.
Right. Well, thank you, Mayor, commissioners, for having me. My name is Nate McCoy. I'm the executive director of the National Association of Minority Contractors, Oregon's chapter. We're a membership and advocacy group. We have 32 and growing MBE-specific contractors that we support through our services. I'm really here today as a last-minute commitment to kind of just address some of the things that we've heard today. I'm not here to talk about data and really tell you what's the wrong or right process to take forward, but what I am here to do is to provide that voice from the minority contractors that I support. And really, what I would like to say is that we've heard a lot of discussion today. I think where I want to take the conversation is to the next level, where the real problems really lie, and why some, I think, the workforce is really a shortage in the community. We have by, I don't think it's even by law, but a state statute that a low-bid process is supposedly the best process for city government to be using on projects. As of recent, we've been doing a lot of other alternative contracting methods that I think have exemplified where we need to be looking and going in the future. CMGC, Construction Management, General Contractor, Alternative Contracting. We have parks projects, two of them right now being built by minority prime contractors, not subcontractors, but minority prime contractors. No CBA agreements on this, these parks projects. Obligations to fulfill, you know, commitments to workforce, commitments to subcontractors. If I, you know, wearing my prior hat as a construction manager, the Housing Bureau, again, we didn't really have CBA-sponsored projects. You could probably ask the Housing Bureau, numbers off the charts. I would agree in a lot of ways with some of the things that some of the CBA conversation is mentioning. But until we get to a point where we're actually talking about contractor development and workforce development, right now, they're in silo. And I think until we get to a place where we can actually have the conversations mutually, you will continue to hear a one-sided conversation on both sides. And I think the biggest tragedy in this is, what are we talking about with our youth? As you look across the industry, and I work with Portland Public Schools very closely, we have 50% of minorities in the school system, but yet, when we look at data, we can't even show 1% of minorities working on projects at the prime level. How are we going to get students to really look at career opportunities in their trades if they can't even identify with anybody in the workforce that looks like them? The numbers are staggering. I mean, it seems like a lot of these policies have influenced more a majority white organizations to grow and thrive, but yet, our kids and the future kids continue to be left behind. So the great thing that I stand before here to say about my partners and my organization is that we don't have any CBA agreements. Out of the good heart of our contractors, we work with Roosevelt High School, we work with Benson High School, we work with a lot of the school systems already where we don't get paid to do anything but support these youth. So I think at some point, I would like to make sure that we come together with leadership from council and have a real conversation about what's going on and hear these stories, because we're losing kids at a high rate. And, you know, if I throw housing in there, that's a whole nother gambit. But certainly, just wanted to be here to offer my support, my opinions, and I will certainly be here next week as well.
Nate, can I just follow up a sec? We hope you're here next week, but we understand your wife's expecting. So we wish, we wish you and her the best in the next couple of weeks. So you said something interesting about the silos and trying to bring this conversation together. Two things. One is, the next time we have this conversation, and we'll probably see you at the CBA discussion next Thursday, it's been moved to Thursday afternoon, 2 o'clock. I wonder if you can also get as specific as possible about any recommendations that you have, but both in terms of the shared goals here, because we can be, people may be in silos, but I think there's a shared set of goals. The question is how you get there. And the second thing is, how do we reconcile some of these interests? CBA, no CBA, different approaches. If the goal is to boost the numbers, let's say you started from the premise that you didn't care what the machinery was, what the mechanism was, but you did care about the outcome. Well, then we should all, then we're out of our silos, apparently, and we're all in accord. So when you're next before us, I'd love to hear some more specifics about where you think there are structural barriers, including state law and contracting rules, that, you know, if you could be king for a day, how would we change those, and what are the kinds of things? And the alternative contracting, you know, is something that we have tackled at this city, but as you know, it's very complicated legally, because you have to show a lot of things. And so it's not something you can use, you can use all the time. That's number one. And number two, how do we move this conversation together? Because it does sometimes feel like we have two very strongly-held views that come together, but I fear we're not reconciling them as well as we could. And you're an important part of this conversation, so I want us to go a little deeper on that.
Absolutely.
And you did get great outcomes at the Housing Bureau. So I think, to the extent there are lessons that you want to share with us, particularly if we're going to be looking at maybe a future, an update to the disparity study, or if we're going to be looking at changes to our code, what are some of those best practices that you participate in?
Absolutely.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Next, sir.
Mayor Hales, commissioners, thank you. I'm Matt Momshiner. I'm an attorney. I work with Pacific Northwest Regional Council, Carpenters, and the Maui Group. I've talked with, I think, mostly all of you about these issues on several occasions. I get the feeling sometimes that there's a question mark as to whether this is a real problem. People have trouble believing that this goes on in our city. But our history is rife with examples of, yeah, this goes on. And it's not just history. And aside from the work that I do for the Carpenters Union, I also plaintiff employment discrimination cases. And I can tell you that this stuff goes on day in and day out on a regular basis, far more than anybody wants to believe in the 21st century. The history is not in the past, it's right with us right now. And these numbers show that. They demonstrate that what we want to believe we're past, we're not past. We need to have the strong programs that you, as the council, are in a position to implement in order to provide the very kind of opportunities that Mr. McCoy is discussing. That's going to really promise the youth of our city an opportunity in the future. Now, there are certainly debates around how that's best accomplished, but there's also great resistance to it, and it comes from within. All we have to do is see the numbers that we just saw, to know that something that we've been doing is not working. When people show up, they're sent home after three hours, and that gets counted as utilization? That's got to make every one of you sitting up there think, what on earth are we doing with our dollars? Is any of this stuff working? No, it's not. We got to be different. We got to choose to make the tough choices. We got to hold ourselves accountable. The ECPC has given you a golden opportunity here to actually step out of this history, to make the difference that's necessary. It's not going to be easy. I'm not going to pretend for a second it is. There's plenty of resistance in all kinds of quarters to this, from the top legal system all the way down to people who just don't want to change the way they do business. Right now, I would suggest that this information here is a precursor to you taking some very aggressive steps in terms of putting hard goals on every project that comes before the city. And that's the kind of thing that the taxpayers, that every citizen sitting in this room, that every citizen sitting outside deserves. I was talking with Margaret Carter. I had the opportunity to speak with her. I'd never met her before. Wonderful lady. She has been working on this very issue, butting her head against the wall since the 80s. Since the 80s, that's 30 years. We're not looking at reinventing the wheel. We've got the tools. It's just a matter of doing it. We've got tools that are proven to do what needs to be done. The two CBA... We've got tools that are proven to do what needs to be done, the two CBA pilot projects shows us what a number of those tools are. I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about the CBA today, because I'll be back next week to talk about that. But all of us sitting here, Mr. Posey, Mr. McCoy, everybody sitting in this room can make this work. The ECPC has a critical role in that, because without the oversight that's necessary, the auditor's report, this city's auditor took a look at contracting practices and noted that some of the very practices in place are actually undermining the diversity work that we want. Now, we just have to be willing to take a look at some of this stuff, say, yeah, that's not working, and go with what does work. I don't think it's rocket science, we don't have to reinvent the wheel. And you got to give the ECPC, because I'm really here to talk about the ECPC, and I believe that they're a strong, important tool to make sure that this doesn't just become something, yeah, we mean it now, and six months down the line, we forgot about that and press a business. And then thirty years from now, some attorney who's got ideas about making the world better comes in front of you and says, hey, thirty years ago, we were talking about this problem. Let's really do something about it. We've got the ability to do it, we've got the tools, it may take courageous leadership, it may take willingness to step out, it's going to take forge a new connection, but we can do that. So I urge you all to support the ECPC in its work, to give them the respect, the support, the funding, the resources to do the job that needs to be done. Thank you.
Wow, where to start?
Good afternoon, my name is James Posey, Mr. Mayor, and other Commissioners, most of you know me. Actually, Mayor Hales, you know where the ECPC started and why it was started. Quite frankly, I'm really disappointed that we've gotten down to the point where now we've got a one-sided view of the ECPC thing. Basically, it's a marketeering for the CBA, and most of the people that are represented on that thing now have an interest that really does not represent a balance. The three people who left the ECPC left for a reason, you all explore that and talk about it, moving up the line on it, you know, the way it's structured, the lack of autonomy. Mayor, you were at the city club, and when you made the declaration that this was going to be a watchdog committee, and it's been anything but a watchdog committee, it's basically been sitting around twiddling his thumbs on a treadmill. And quite frankly, you know as well as I do, the issue of tracking has been on your desk for as long as you've been mayor. How in the world can you expect to actually have any accountability if you don't know where, you know, the resources are going and who's benefiting from the program? That's common sense, it defies intellectual honesty to really expect the program to work if you can't track it and you can't really see who's getting what. And I've been asking for it through Nick Fish's office, through everybody's office, through Dan's office. You know, the reality, much of these problems would be solved if we had transparency, true transparency, shined some light on this stuff, and the community at large would be in an uproar if they saw how mismanaged some of these things are. So you can start with that.
Let's be clear, let's be clear, when you talk about transparency, you're not just talking, I want to put words out, but you're not just talking about data which the city could pull from some spreadsheet, you're talking about going, you're talking about verifying that data and getting beyond the data. So in fairness, it isn't, there's some room that has all the data that you haven't gotten. You've raised some fundamental questions about how we collect the data and the integrity of that data.
And the integrity of the data, let me just give you an example. People mention ESBS and MBEs and DPEs. It might surprise you to know that many of the MBEs are basically front companies. Some of these so-called DPEs have companies that are really owned by a fifty-one percent minority and forty-nine percent white women. It shouldn't surprise anybody that the marketplace is filled with white males because that's where it defaults to, and the pool of resources to build on building capacity is based upon that sort of aggregation. And, I mean, this is just common sense, that's, you know, it's just being intellectually dishonest not to see who's in these pools and these acronyms. We talk about ESBS, MBEs, I could share with you, if I saw the names, I could share with you who those folk are, on what their websites look like, who really, some of these people don't, couldn't identify with a minority community outside of coming to your council and talking about it, they don't step foot at the MLK breakfast or at the, down there at the barber shop, they wouldn't have a clue.
So, James, you also know, and I don't want to cut into your time, I'm sure the mayor will give you more.
I will, I will.
You know that with the change in state law, we now have the authority to do some of those investigations to make sure that people who claim to be certified or claim to be playing by the rules are in fact doing that. So we're now, and in fact, we're setting up a mechanism through the legal department to do that. So we have, we actually, the last time we had this discussion, we were talking about how do we receive complaints and how do we set up that system, but that has changed, that's one thing that has changed.
That's very good, I want to commend you all for that.
Well, thank the legislature for giving us the authority.
Well, actually, it originated from here, going up there, you know, they didn't just, they didn't just out of the goodness of their heart jump off and do that, through some stuff that you guys are doing, but I want to, I want to talk to you about the math on that, because this is about math. All those people who are fronts and who are in this marketplace are still there, they're competing against the people you're trying to promote right now. The whole accumulation of ESBS, false and fake minorities, they're out there right now, they're the ones that's driving this market down, so you can't get capacity, so now you've got an atmosphere in which a minority contractor who really wants to be a minority contractor is basically, the probability of them being successful is null and void. And let me just be honest about this. We talk about, let's just take this for example, I don't know if you all know that most of the work that's done in Oregon is not by unions, it's by non-unions. There's no representation of the non-union people out here. Now, take it for a guy, from a guy like me who started out dump trucking at the bottom end, worked my way up, did a lot of other stuff. If I had to go through a union to get to start my business, it's just an automatic deterrent, a turnoff. Now, as you progress, you get more money, you get more contracts, you can manage a union relationship. So you automatically really, I mean, don't take my word for it, just look on the internet, look at what these PLAs have done, look at how they discourage, how they work against people of color, minorities, when they really are trying to make progress. Let me just say this, one other thing, I know I'm taking all the time here, but the fact that a person is really striving to be a good contractor in this community, you're already working against a whole bunch of barriers administratively and otherwise. So when you, when we're talking about having all these various programs, these requirements and everything, there's an automatic turnoff. And I said this, and Maurice knows this, I predicted, I predicted the CBA catastrophe that you all are looking for. You're not even talking about it, but that framework report was real nice. It said, it basically, you all saw it, it basically said you had, you had city administrators doing the same work the so-called CBA was doing, virtually no compliance, duplication, the consultants got more work than the contractors did. That's embarrassing. So, I mean, I'm going to come back and talk to you all next week, and I could get it in better form, and maybe talk to you about explicitly what I have on my mind, but you guys got to, take Dante, he's trying to say it nicely to you all, you got an Office of Management and Finance, that's a joke. These guys are begging for data that all public officials know you ought to have. Mayor, you said you were going to put it on the website so the world could see who's getting these contracts and why, and why not. Give it to a person like me, because I would go out and walk the streets and really find out what the, what these people are doing. I know their neighbors, I know where they live, and that's how white people do it, that's how they get, that's how they're successful. They have cousins and brothers, they have a community, and they come together, and that's how they're on these jobs, and that's how they mentor and develop people in their community because they have relationships. This is about relationships, and there are very few black people out here who have relationships and very few success. You said it best, you need to reward the behavior you want to see. When you see people out here who are successful, you ought to reward them, give them everything. I'm going to just say there's one other thing here. Sorry about that, folks, I'm sorry about that.
James, go ahead. That's okay, we'll break for lunch, for dinner, we'll come back for the hearing.
May I go back a long way? The first disparity study that was done for this city had some good recommendations in it, and the shelter market came out, I didn't like the idea of the shelter market, that's another thing. We always got to shelter these minorities, we got to make them disadvantaged, we got to do this, we got to do that. There's no respect in that scenario, you're talking about disadvantaged, maybe underutilized is a better terminology, the terminology is demeaning. But here, way back when, if you had a child that was having problems, you would specialize, you would, you would put them in a situation, you would cultivate them, some people call it incubation. When you have, when the level of malfeasance is so low, then you have to build things to prop them up till they can get to where they want to be. This is not about being legal or non-legal, this is about being honest and understanding what the problem is. We need an incubation program so we can prime the pump to get people in the system so they can be competitive in this marketplace. You've got to make special efforts over and above just leveling playing field. We're too far below now to get to where we need to be to make success. That's really what I want to say to you all, and I'll talk a little bit more next week about the CBA. In the meantime, go Google PLAs and see, and go look on the market and see how it's affected people of color across the board, you'll see what I'm talking about.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you all. Are there others that want to speak on this, on this report before we call Dante back for some further discussion? Are there other questions for him? No other questions for Dante at the moment? All right, then let's take a motion, please, to accept the report.
Second.
We'll call, please.
Well, I appreciate the report, appreciate the frustration, and, you know, unfortunately, I think this is something that gets reinvented every four years, every time we have a new mayor, there has to be a new mayoral stamp of approval on his or her solution to this problem. So, you know, with all due respect to Mayor Hales, I mean, you've tried, but I think we're in for, you know, when Mayor-elect Wheeler becomes mayor, we're probably going to do this all over again, so, you know, strap yourselves in and we'll try to do better. Aye.
This issue of the, we get disaggregated data and then it's aggregated and has to be separated by hand is really frustrating, and I understand that these software issues that sound like, well, it's a software issue, why can't they just fix it, are often more complicated than that, but I'm looking forward to talking with procurement about what does need to be done so that we have the data readily available. Is that an expensive proposition, is this time-consuming, because it's, but in any event, it's critical, I think we need to get that done in particular. Thank you very much for the report. Aye.
Fritz. I first met Mr. Ramming when his wife, Ally, and I were walking the picket line at OHSU, she was a registered nurse like I was, and we went out on strike on seventeenth of December two thousand and one, and we stayed out for fifty-six days for many of the same reasons that we're talking about today, respect, retention, remuneration. And we need, I think we need something that's similar like the Office of Equity and Human Rights and like the Department of Justice Settlement Agreement. It's not just the mayor's responsibility to do this, it's all of us. I think the ECPC, which is easy to say and harder to spell out, but it's equitable contracting and purchasing commission, it's an important thing. I didn't realize that it, that the Office of Management Finance didn't send either a staff person or enough money for a staff person when we transferred the commission to the Office of Equity, and Equity and Human Rights Office is so small that there isn't capacity to do something like this without additional staff. So I would favor doing something in the full bump now that I know of the problem, not waiting to the regular budget, and I, you know, I hardly ever say that because I think usually we should be looking at ongoing positions, but this is urgent, and it does remind me of when we had the State of Black Oregon report that showed us that for, in seventeen years, for African-Americans on every single data point, things are worse, things were worse when that report came out than they were seventeen years previously. I'm horrified to find out that now the data, such as we are able to call it, is worse than when we, than when I first started. So whatever we've been doing, I do remember raising my children, I think sometimes I stopped doing something, if I just kept doing it longer, it might have been more successful than switching every five minutes, but we need to be evaluating, how are we doing this, how are we doing it in our bureaus? It was mentioned that Parks has got prime contractors for the East Portland Parks, it was mentioned that the Water Bureau had better-than-average participation on the job, let's look at what we're doing right and celebrate that, and then let's do it again. So thank you very much to the Commission, it is hard to hang in there when you don't feel you're getting the respect, you're certainly not getting any remuneration, but you're there so that we can retain and keep people in the workforce and have the city become what the Office of Equity said, we have to have fairness in jobs, contracts, and services. And we're not there on the other equity issues, and we're not there on this yet, but we will keep trying. Thank you, Mayor. Aye.
Let's, let me begin by just finding the common ground here. We use a lot of acronyms, there seems to be some healthy tension in the community around certain ends or means, but let's talk about what unites all my friends in this room. We began this process because we wanted to expand opportunity to people that had been shut out from participating fully in these opportunities. And since we control a lot of public resources that are invested in the community, we wanted to make sure that the community was fairly competing for those resources. And there is no disagreement about that premise. Sadly, what I think has happened is that this well-intentioned effort has gotten, has moved sideways. And so I have a couple of ideas about how to address that, but I want to start with where we agree. There is, there is broad agreement on the, on the, on both the values proposition and on the goal, but how we get there and how we measure progress and what success looks like, there is some disagreement. So, I thank you for the report, we're, we are doing a formal exercise here of accepting the report, and I think the next step, Mayor, is to take some of the key recommendations and ask procurement, legal, and others to review them and to come back with us with a roadmap. But I'm going to, I'm going to take a slightly different view than my friend Commissioner Fritz and urge us not to rush, not to rush into addressing some of the structural problems because I think they run deep enough that we need to hit the pause button and hit reset. I have had conversations with a lot of the people in this room who I have the highest regard for about these issues, and these are the things we have spent the most time talking about. What is the mission of ECPC? How do we deal with the fact that there's been so many changes in leadership? How do we attract and retain qualified members? Because you barely got a quorum now, and if people are coming and going, that's not, that's not helpful to the cause. What's the role of ECPC? Is it primarily to oversee the CBA? Is it to look at equity and contracting? Is it to do some combination? But, you know, as my office always tells me, unless you know what lane I'm supposed to stay in, then I generally get into other lanes. What's the, so what's the purpose? What have we charged people with? And then, to the point that Amanda and others have mentioned, once we've clarified mission and role and leadership and membership, you have to have the resources to do the job. And we learned that the hard way for having for years oversight bodies of our utilities that used to come in and give reports and object to the fact they can get good information, and they'd make a report, the report would be forgotten within five minutes, with all due respect to the folks who presented it, and we had a structural problem. So we did something about it, we created a new oversight body, we gave them dedicated... We gave them dedicated staff people. We paid for it. And we said, you're going to be independent, whether we like your advice or not. You're going to have an independent role with independent staff. You're going to come in, and you're going to have a clearly defined role. That was a sea change. So what I'm going to suggest is, I think all those issues have to be revisited before I want to start moving forward with this model because I think the foundation's not strong enough right now. And I think what we're at risk of doing is just putting some more plaster on the side of the building without addressing the foundation. And by the way, I appreciate that the appeal was made to this mayor, for whom this issue has been very important during his, in a number of ways. And I appreciate that the council's been challenged to do something, but in reality, we're going to have a new mayor in a few months. And unless the new mayor comes in saying this is a priority and wants to put resources into it, it's not going to move forward. So we have a transition that's underway. We have a new mayor that has publicly said these are issues he cares about. I would like to see the reset conversation occur within that context, or else we're going to be back here a year from now in the next report, and we're going to have the same conversation. And frankly, there comes a point when shame on us for wasting your time. If you don't have a clearly defined mission and role, if you don't have a full complement of members, if you don't have staff that are assisting you, and you're not getting the data you need to make judgments, then frankly, we're wasting your time. And that's before we even get into this debate about what we heard today kind of foreshadowed that we'll hear more of next week about what's the best vehicle to accomplish these ends? How much does the CBA, you know, improve outcomes or not? That's a good question. If we're going to be transparent, we have to ask that and other questions. But for me, this has been a very frustrating hearing, and I hear, the frustration's coming from you to us, and I hear it, and I don't like wasting people's time. So I think we've got to go back and take what was a well-intentioned effort, a well-intentioned idea, and we've got to rethink it. We've got to rethink what its mission and role is and staffing and what kind of information it gets and who's around the table. And we've got to make sure that the next mayor is bought into that. And since there's a transition, that couldn't come at a better time. So thank you for the report. There's our some things that have been put on the table that I'm very interested in pursuing. I cannot believe we're still talking about insufficient data to even make judgments about this stuff. And that's on us, and it's not just OMF. It's not the mayor. It's on all of us, and we've got to fix that. So thank you. Aye.
Well, I have a number of thoughts based on this discussion and others. And let me put some of these out here now. Certainly perfectly willing, excuse me, include the mayor-elect in these discussions, but I want to take off on what some of my colleagues said on a couple of points. I think, you know, it's, I'm happy that this is part of my agenda. I'm not happy about where we are in it. We have a lot of work to do, and we have an unacceptable picture that's just been clearly revealed to us by the report we've heard today. So maybe it's less about who's in office, though. I think our commitment matters, and the future occupants of this table's commitment will matter, too. But maybe it's less about who's in office than how we set this up to succeed. And that's a lot of what I've heard here today. So if we're dealing with institutionalized racism, maybe we need institutionalized authority to act on the problem. And we can certainly create that institutionalized authority. So if we want the power for change to be real, then it might need to be somewhat politician-proof. It's nice when we're helpful, but it will be hopefully continued when maybe we're not as helpful. I'm not casting aspersions on anyone in particular. I'm saying I believe the mayor-elect is committed to this. I am, everybody up here is. But we have made the progress that we all want to make. And there's no excuse for not making that progress in the current situation. When I ran for mayor, there were two cranes on the horizon in the city of Portland. Look out any window today. If there was ever a time that we could be making real gains, it's in this marketplace. And this marketplace is going to last for a while yet. Sure, there could be a bit of a recession or a bit of a slowdown. We've got 1,000 people a month moving to this city, and we're building things to serve them every day, and there's a lot of work out there. And if there was ever a time that we ought to be able to really make change, it's in this time right now. So I've heard a lot today about policy, about data and staff, and about oversight. I want to spend a good part of the next three and a half months talking about what policies are working and what aren't, and what should we change? What are the right goals? What are the right tools? What are the right programs? And next week's discussion is a piece of that. Data, I agree, we've got to fix this, again, in a time where data is all around us all the time. We ought to be able to know this. This shouldn't be that hard. I am proposing in the fall bump some staff support for this function. So thank you, Commissioner Fritz, and we'll continue that discussion because I think that's obvious. And then, you know, oversight really matters. I'm committed to police reform. We're making a lot of it. But the fact that we have oversight from the federal government tightens us up and makes sure that we do a good job on it. So having real oversight authority for this shared purpose, it's shared by everybody here at this table, everybody in this room, and I believe actually by our city administrators. I don't think, I don't think we have city administrators who don't want to make progress here. I'm going to assume good faith on all parts, and I think there is a lot of it out there to work with, but we're not there yet. So thank you. Don't, as Commissioner Fish said, don't let us waste your time, but don't leave just yet because I don't intend to, and I don't think anybody here does. So thank you for a clear-eyed look at an unacceptable situation, and I look forward to working with all of you to make it better. Aye. Take a two-minute break. Take a brief break and then come back to the rest of our agenda. Thank you.
And please, let's take up item 1032.
Appeal of Portsmouth Neighborhood Association against Hearing Officer's Decision to Approve the Application of Bridge Meadows for a Conditional Use and Adjustment with Conditions for New Meadows, a Proposed Group Living Facility at 8710 North Dana Avenue, LU15-273480CUAD.
Okay, we're going to go through a number of procedural announcements here to set the stage for this. Some of you have been at City Council meetings before, welcome. If you want to speak on this item, you'll be given the opportunity to do that. Just let our clerk know. We typically allow three minutes for individual testimony. It doesn't look like we're having any trouble accommodating that today. You need only give your name. You don't need to give us your address. If you're here representing an organization, let us know that. We follow the rules of decorum in this chamber, so if you agree with somebody's testimony and want to show support, give them a thumbs up or a wave of the hand, and polite hand gesture to the negative is okay if you disagree with them. But we save applause for visiting dignitaries and students, so unless you're one of those who would like to keep it nonverbal in terms of the council communication, so we can hear what's going on and everybody hears their, gets their say. So with that, I'll turn it over to our city attorney for some announcements. I have some procedural steps I need to go through as well.
Okay. This is an on-the-record hearing. That means that you must limit your testimony to the material and issues in the record. We will begin with a staff report by the Bureau of Development Services staff for approximately 10 minutes. Following the staff report, City Council will hear from interested persons in the following order. The appellant will go first, and will have 10 minutes to present his or her case. Following the appellant, persons who support the appeal will go next. Each person will have three minutes to speak to council. The principal opponent will have 15 minutes to address City Council and rebut the appellant's presentation. If there is no principal opponent, council will move directly to testimony from persons who oppose the appeal after supporters of the appeal conclude their testimony. After the principal opponent, the council will hear from persons who oppose the appeal. Again, each person will have three minutes. And finally, the appellant will have five minutes to rebut the presentation of the opponents of the appeal. Council may then close the hearing, deliberate, and take a vote on the appeal. If the vote is a tentative vote, council will set a future date for the adoption of findings and a final vote on the appeal. If council takes a final vote today, that will conclude the matter before the City Council. The scope of testimony. I would like to announce several guidelines for those of you who will be addressing City Council today. The evidentiary record is closed. Again, this is an on-the-record hearing. This hearing is to decide only if the hearings officer made the correct decision based on the evidence that was presented to it. This means you must limit your remarks to arguments based on the record compiled by the hearings officer. You may refer to evidence that was previously submitted to the hearings officer. You may not submit new evidence today that was not submitted to the hearings officer. If your argument includes new evidence or issues, you may be interrupted and reminded that you must limit your testimony to the record. Council will not consider new information, and it will be rejected by City Council's final decision. Objections to new evidence. If you believe a person who addressed City Council today improperly presented new evidence or presented a legal argument that relies on evidence that is not in the record, you may object to the argument. Objections to new issues. Finally, under state law, only issues that were raised before the hearings officer may be raised in the appeal to City Council. If you believe another person has raised issues today that were not raised before the hearings officer, you may object to council's consideration of that issue. The applicant must identify constitutional challenges to conditions of approval. Additionally, if applicant fails to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with enough specificity to allow council to respond, the applicant will be precluded from bringing action for damages in Circuit Court. I'll now turn back to you.
Thank you. Those requirements, by the way, are all founded in state law, and so are these questions. So first, I need to ask if any members of the council need to declare a conflict of interest. Okay, I hear none. And does anyone on the council wish to report, ex parte contacts on this case, information gathered outside of this hearing? Okay? And if anyone wants to challenge those assertions that we have not had ex parte contacts or have a conflict of interest, this would be the time to do that. Hearing none, then we are going to proceed, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Stokes for staff report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Hales, council members. I'm Kathleen Stokes, the assigned BDS planner for this land use review. We also have Teresa Montalvo for the assigned Bureau of Transportation planner in attendance to answer any questions that you may have for her. This proposal is for a project that goes by the name of New Meadows. It's a group living use for 19 residents. The proposed facility would provide housing and counseling services for 14 young adults who are transitioning from the foster care system to an independent adult living. There are up to four rooms that would accommodate both a young parent and a child being the, one of the young residents with their child. One of the rooms would also house a resident assistant. The program will provide workforce development and educational support and life skills training, and a full-time counselor would also work at the facility. The applicant's also requesting, in addition to conditional use approval for the group living use, an approval of an adjustment to reduce the spacing requirement in the code between group living uses, which generally requires them to be 600 feet apart, to reduce that to 185 feet. Bridge Meadows is the applicant for this review, and the Bridge Meadows Development, which is an intergenerational project, is located just 185 feet away. The Bridge Meadows site has an approved conditional use with group-for-group living facility for up to 52 residents, and that includes, in the intergenerational model, children and foster or adoptive parents of those children and also surrogate grandparents. And the plan is that these individuals would also have an interactive relationship with the residents of New Meadows. The proposal for New Meadows is, as a group living use, was significantly revised to address concerns of the neighborhood regarding the original design. The revised proposal was approved with conditions by the hearings officer on July 14, 2016. That decision was appealed by Portsmouth Neighborhood Association mainly based on remaining concerns regarding scale of the development and the reduced distance from another group living use. This, as it has been said, is an on-the-record case, but following the neighborhood appeal, the applicant did extend the final day for a local decision on this case until February 17, 2017. The proposed development, shown in the site plan here, would include a parking area for five vehicles, as well as detached accessory structures and an outdoor area and stormwater swell with the main residential facility. The hearings officer's decision required the applicant to install L3 landscaping and an architectural split-faced masonry wall along the north property line. The wall had to be six feet tall except for the part near the west property line where it would be reduced in height to provide adequate site distance at the street edge of the driveway. There was also a condition that required landscaping in a six-foot-tall, fully side-obscuring wood fence to be installed along the east property line for a distance of 45 feet, running from the north property line to the edge of an interior walkway on the site. Now, these are drawings that show the original proposal as it was submitted by the applicant. These renderings were revised in response to the neighborhood concerns, and the applicant actually canceled the originally scheduled hearing in order to meet and work with the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association. The applicants will talk about their participation in those neighborhood meetings and talk more at length about the changes that were made to the design, but the final submittal for the revised proposal is shown here in these street views. The building is now proposed to be two stories with multiple entrances and varied roof lines. So looking at the area, the subject site and the surrounding area is zoned single-dwelling R5, and approximately 250 feet to the north, there is an R2 low-density multi-dwelling residential zone that covers most of the New Columbia housing development. And then a little bit further to the north and to the east is the University Park and also Community Center in the open space zone. Here's an aerial photo that shows the context that I was just speaking about with the New Meadows site. They're marked in red, a site. It's at the corner of North Dana and Hunt, and it's a half a block approximately northwest of the Bridge Meadows site. The closest nearby uses that aren't in the household living use category are the, is the residentially-zoned Rosa Parks Portland Public School, and then I had already mentioned New Columbia to the northwest, which is residentially-zoned and is developed with household living uses. And then the University Park and Charles Jordan Community Center, which are to the north and east of the Rosa Parks School. The following photos that we're going to look at will show the site and the context of the nearby properties and their development. This is the subject site, a photo taken from North Hunt, looking to the north. The site used to be developed with an electrical substation, and we can see some of the remaining perimeter landscaping that was a screen for that substation. The utility pool that you see on the right-hand side and the tire tracks are in the, at the east edge of the property in the public alleyway. There's a close-up of that alleyway. It's 15 feet wide, running from north to south through the block, obviously unimproved. The applicant doesn't, at this time, propose any changes to the alley in part because of the need to relocate the utility pool. Here we see the site from North Dana, looking north-northeast. The garage seen in the distance right behind the utility pool serves a home on North Wayland in the next block. It's adjacent, that garage is adjacent to the northeast corner of the site, and it's accessed via the alley that we were looking at. The taller buildings that are to the left of the garage are single-dwelling structures that are located on narrow lots running onto Wayland to the north-northeast corner of the subject site. The site, seen here in this view from south to north, contains previously-platted lots, narrow lots 25 by 100, that could allow by right the development of up to six single-dwelling residences, which would include four detached houses and then on the corner, two lots. They're a little bit undersized, so therefore you, but you could still use the provision to have two attached units on those two lots, making up the six possible homes on this This view is showing a home on North Dana that abuts the north lot line of the subject site. As was discussed in the hearings officer's decision, the property owner of this property submitted a letter that raised concerns that the New Meadows facility would negatively impact his family's livability, and it was particularly in regards to the proposed location of the parking area, which would be adjacent to his property. This is the home to the east of the site at Hunt and Wayland, abutting the alley with the subject site at the far left of the view. Another view of the same home, it's immediately across the alley to the east of the subject site with the main entrance and garage oriented towards North Hunt Street. And here, we have a view, okay, to the west along North Hunt Street. And this is Wayland Avenue, looking north from Hunt Street. The photo reflects the predominant character of the area with a mixture of one- and two-story, single-dwelling residences. And this is a home that's directly across the site, from the site on North Dana. These homes also are on North Dana, and you see homes like this on both Dana and Wayland with the narrow lot development. These skinny homes are constructed on originally-platted 2,500-square-foot lots, the same as the plating configuration that's on the subject site. Now, two of these homes on the left side of the picture are directly across the street from the proposed New Meadows site, and the other two are abutting toward the north and west of the site. This view is showing the south side of Hunt Street. We see part of it on the left-hand side of the picture. There's a dilapidated, overgrown property that's directly across the street from the subject site, and we can also see some of the homes on North Dana Avenue here to the south of the site. On the right-hand side of the photo here, we see that dense vegetation of that property that's dilapidated, that surrounds that home. And beyond that, to the east, are taller new homes in the, and in the far background, the gold-colored building is one of the Bridge Meadows buildings. Finished with a few slides of the Bridge Meadows Development here at North Hunt and Wayland, and looking down the street here between Wayland and Foss Avenues, and the last picture of the Bridge Meadows Development. So the approval criteria for this review, for the record, are found in Code Sections 33.815.105A through E, conditional uses for institutional and other uses in the R zones, and this is required to meet that approval criteria for the group living use for 19 residents. The adjustment review criteria is found in Code Section 33.805.040A through F, and of course, the adjustment is to reduce the minimum spacing requirement between group living uses from 600 to 185 feet. The hearings officer found that with conditions of approval, these criteria were met. The, and I had already actually referenced most of the physical conditions. There was also a condition for an adherence to a set of house rules and a requirement that there be a good faith effort to establish a good neighbor agreement and that there be implementation of safety and crime prevention measures. So at this point, City Council has to decide whether the aspects of the proposal that were previously discussed and the issues and solutions raised by the applicant and those that testified in opposition, but new, are, they make their decision based on that, new evidence cannot be considered as has been said previously. Council can approve this appeal and overturn the hearings officer's decision, or deny the appeal and uphold that decision, or you can actually determine that it's appropriate to request further revisions to the proposal that are in keeping with those previously raised issues. That concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions at this time?
I have a question. There's a reference to a crime prevention measures. So what's the context for that condition?
The, I'm sorry, you mean the approval criteria or the...
What is it about this particular facility that requires a crime prevention plan?
It's, it's a standard requirement that the Police Bureau generally makes for these reviews. Part, one of the approval criteria states that the proposal won't have neighborhood impacts on safety, and there's also an approval criteria that states that the city service agencies have found the proposal to be adequate, and it names specifically the Police Bureau. So in light of those approval criteria for these types of reviews, we often get responses from the Police Bureau stating that they want to have an assessment to ascertain that the site will meet crime prevention through design standards, that there be adequate lighting, that there be visible signs showing the address so that emergency responses, vehicles or personnel can find the site. Those sorts of things are sort of standard requirements.
That's helpful. It's, it's, so that goes back to something we talked about, even going back to Tom Potter, about crime prevention through environmental design, not, not, not who is occupying the premises.
Correct.
That's what I wanted to just make sure I understood.
I have a clarifying question, too, regarding the hearings officer's decision about condition E, about the good neighbor agreement.
Yes.
So it states that the applicant must develop with the Portland Neighborhood Association representatives of Bridge Meadows a good neighbor agreement, or must document that the New Meadows and Bridge Meadows representatives met in good faith with the Neighborhood Association for the purpose of meeting for one. Do we have an assurance from the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association that they're willing to meet on that issue?
It's my understanding that the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association is willing to meet, but they have part of their appeal statement. They claim that they thought that there should be a requirement for a good neighbor agreement rather than, you know, that it be finalized ahead of time rather than that there just be a requirement that they meet and try to create one. And I can explain that in the past, some neighborhoods in some situations have held up projects by failing to agree to meet or holding projects from being able to go forward based on certain stipulations that they would not compromise on. And so generally, over time, Bureau of Development, Bureau of Development Services staff have worked with, softening the phrasing on that type of condition, to say, you have to at least give it a good effort to try to have an agreement. And so that was the recommendation that went to the hearings officer, and he adopted that language.
And I agree with that, because you can't force people to come to an agreement. The concern I have, the way the language meets, is if the Neighborhood Association refuses to meet, then that condition cannot be met.
Uh, how, well, if, I believe that the condition says that the applicant has made a good faith agreement to meet with the neighborhood.
No, it actually says it must document that they met in good faith with the Neighborhood.
Or, or made an attempt?
No, it doesn't say that.
I beg your pardon, I, I adopted this case after the previous planner retired.
Mr. Franks, the language is "met in good faith"?
No, this is way down in the weeds, and we can, we can discuss it later. Let's hear the appeal, but I just wanted to clarify that's an issue.
So that is something that we may need to look at modifying that language of that condition.
Can I just understand that, I'm, I'm tracking the issue, because I'm interested. Is your concern that it's a standard the applicant can't meet, or that it's a standard that the neighborhood can frustrate?
It gives the neighborhood veto power.
And it's, the current language is that they have to show they met in good faith.
Right. So I think that the language is to change it, made a good faith effort to meet rather than met in good faith.
I agree.
I would flag that for discussion, and obviously, since it's in the record, people can testify on that question if they'd like to. Okay, anything else from Kathleen that we need at this point? Okay, thank you very much. Let's hear from the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association, because you're the appellant. Good afternoon, welcome.
My name's Brianna Robins, R-O-B-B-I-N-S, and I am appearing today on behalf of the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association, but also on behalf of my neighbors and myself. I do live in the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association. Didn't want you to get me confused with a lawyer or somebody who knows what they're doing. So I'm just going to go through one by one the specific criteria, and I don't know if you have the appeal document in front of you, but I'm just going to give you an explanation of each one of these and the concerns of the Neighborhood Association and the neighbors. So in the approval criteria, 33.815.105, just to highlight this point, this approval criteria allows institutions and other non-household living uses in a residential zone that maintain or do not significantly conflict with the appearance and function of residential areas. So we're appealing, based on the first A1 here, the overall residential appearance and function of the area will not be significantly lessened due to the increased proportion of non-household living uses. We do believe it will significantly conflict with the appearance and function, and as you could see from some of the things that were just brought up on the picture, there was a map, there was a zoning, and you can see that this area, this proposed area, is already surrounded by Bridge Meadows, which is a group living facility, Rosa Parks Elementary, which is a non-household use, Charles Jordan Community Center, which is a non-household use, the R2-zoned New Columbia, as well as there's a church that was just off the picture. So there's actually already quite a bit of non-household living uses. We believe it will be an unreasonable concentration of non-household living uses in the area. There's already several, and at some point, we have to say, all right, that's enough, and maybe we can move to a different location to continue to build other non-household living use areas. One moment. In hearings officer's file or decision, he stated that the group living use will essentially, while not technically, under the Portland zoning code constitute a household living use. I disagree with that, in noting that the proposal is like a dormitory facility. It's a little bit more like a community service institution, like the institutional use of a community service, where these people are getting treatment, they have a full-time employee there to assist them, they have an RA. This is quite a bit more like an institutional use for community services, except that possibly, not necessarily, the people living there will be there for more than a month. I don't know that that's the case, but it seems to be. So I would like to make a point here that it is a group living use, and it is not close to a household living use. It definitely is that, as the hearings officer tried to make it sound like it maybe isn't. There was also inconsistency we wanted to point out, where the hearings officer talked about the impacts within 400 feet and within 600 feet. I think that within 600 feet would be accurate, but we were confused as to what exactly he was meaning. We think that whole neighborhood area would be affected, everything you saw in that picture and beyond. In A2, the intensity and scale of the proposed use and of existing household living uses, the hearings officer erred procedurally in addressing this condition. And the reason I say that is because primary argument here was about what could be built there, which is also what was just brought up. there, which is also what was just brought up. There could be six houses. It could be divided into that. And while that's true, that's not actually what makes this condition met, is not what's possible and what's being proposed here. We're only looking at what's being proposed here. And I believe I'm correct on reading the law that way. So in only looking at what's being proposed here and not a various amount of possibilities of other things that could be, maybe, might be, the scale is not compatible. The proposal is several times larger than any household use in the area. And it is on a bigger lot, which is one thing that I believe the hearings officer noted. But the bigger lots should have several smaller style buildings, just like other bigger lots in the area or the smaller homes. The style's not compatible. I was pleased that they agreed to meet with us and do a focus group and kind of talk about our concerns, but the main concerns of the people in that focus group were that they wanted individual buildings. They wanted the feel, the characteristics of household living uses of a neighborhood, of residential, and what they're getting is one giant building. And that concern was not addressed. Instead, they changed the style and the roofing and the facade, which is geometrical changes that were nice, but again, it's not addressing the concern that we actually had. So the next point here is under B2, the proposal will mitigate the differences in appearance or scale. So like I said, in that control group, the neighbors requested separate buildings and were denied that. The neighbors requested a mix of single and multi-level, like Bridge Meadows. They have two-story, one-story, two-story, that kind of situation. We were denied that. Neighbors requested moving the parking lot to the alleyway side so as not to interfere with neighbor livability. The parking lot's currently directly next to somebody's home, when it could very easily ...
Excuse me.
It could very easily be moved to the alleyway side. And if it's on the alleyway side, it can have access to the alleyway as a roadway and it won't be bothering somebody's home. And the only, when I was in the focus group, the only thing they brought up to not move that parking lot was because they might have to move a light pole. And I believe that a person's livability is more important than a few thousand dollars to move a light pole. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, but I do believe that Cliff, who's the neighbor there, his livability is more important than that. And I think it would be an easy reconstruction to move the parking lots to a different location. The next I have here is under C1, which goes into livability. I could have segued that better. The proposal will not have significant adverse impacts on the livability of nearby residential zoned lands. And specifically, I want to talk about noise, glare from the lights, late night operations, that sort of thing. So, and now you've already brought up the good neighbor agreement, and I was also confused on the language. The good faith explanation makes a little bit more sense now. I wasn't really certain what that meant, what kind of documentation that would be. And you did note that it said "met in good faith" as opposed to... As I understand from the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association, we are definitely willing to meet on a good neighbor agreement. And to give a little background about that, which I believe has been addressed in this, Bridge Meadows also chose to go into a good neighbor agreement with the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association. And we think that although I know they're trying to soften the language so that people don't sandbag and draw the process out, I think it would be safe to say that it should be required because it's already in place for another one of their facilities. And I don't think that for it to already be in place on one facility and to say on this one, yeah, at least they met, is quite the same thing. I think that since it's the same company, it's easy to say that it should be required in this particular case.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Since you raised the good...
She has the finished commissure, so she's got her time.
I know, and I have a question that's germane to what she just said. You mentioned the good faith... The mayor will, I'm sure, stop the clock and give you the additional time. You mentioned the good faith agreement. What has been your experience with the good faith agreement at the other location?
You mean meeting in good faith?
The...
The good neighbor agreement?
Good neighbor agreements.
So the good neighbor agreement that occurred at the other location preceded me being involved. So it happened, I believe, in 2009. And I believe they met and they came to agreement on it. Now, I don't have a copy of that in front of me, and as I understand, Dorinda Schubert was supposed to provide one to Mary Margaret Wheeler Webster, who's the chair of the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association.
I didn't mean it so technically what I meant, I guess what I'm trying to get at is you have a good neighbor agreement at a related facility, which would shed some light on what's the experience been in interacting with them. Because a good neighbor agreement is not just a piece of paper, it's an invitation to a relationship. So would you care to offer a perspective on the relationship between the neighborhood and the existing facility?
My understanding is the existing facility and the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association, now I don't know about specific neighbors, but they've interacted very well. In fact, sometimes we hold our meetings at the community center that they have at Bridge Meadows. So we've gotten along in the past, they've connected in the past, it has not seemed to be a problem.
Thank you.
Yeah. Let me get back to where I was. So as I, just to restate, I do think that it should be required, especially because so many neighbors, and this should be part of the record, there was submitted by another neighbor, Allison McManus, I believe, is over 30 signatures of various neighbors saying that they're opposed to this project, they're concerned about this project. And I think to help quell those concerns, a good neighbor agreement should be required, not just meeting in good faith. All right. Oh, and as a note on that, they, and I don't know who exactly wrote it, but they were saying like they would have quiet hours from 9:00 PM to 6:00 AM, which is not even consistent with Portland ordinance. It's, Portland ordinance is quiet hours from 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So again, that, this is part of the reason I think it should maybe be required, because we need to at least follow the law as well as making a good neighbor agreement. So I'd want those things clarified in that good neighbor agreement. As a reason we think that this should also be a requirement, this isn't just a facility with some parents and some children and, you know, that kind of thing. This is specifically 18 to 24-year-olds. This is a specific age range, and they're all people who have a specific background, being foster youth. And so our concerns are a little higher because it's a younger crowd we're looking at. And we, as most of us know, there could be an increased level of noise and late night activities associated with those residents, and especially when they're concentrated in a specific area. Because it's more like a dormitory on a college campus, which will have house rules. That's why, again, why I think the good neighbor agreement is a little bit more necessary in this case than it would be in other cases. Moving on to D2, which is about the transportation. Is the transportation system capable of supporting the proposal in addition to the existing uses in the area? On-street parking impacts, neighborhood impacts. Now, the only, and again, I don't know if this is standard practice, but the only evaluation done was that traffic consultant hired by the applicant who did a study on a single day. And coming from a scientific background, generally you don't take one experiment and create a fact out of that. You would go multiple times, and they believe they met late at night in January or December. So this is concerning because we contend that the studies, the applicant cannot be relied upon or considered or determining if the condition has been met. So basically, I would think that the PBOT would do their own study to make sure that there's no impacts. You have to remember, there's a community center on Foss, which is parallel, and there's also right down Dana, Rosa Parks. There's already increased traffic because of people attending these places. There's been claims that maybe the people in this particular building will not have cars. But that doesn't mean their guests won't have cars. There's somebody that their job is going to be to go there, the person who's an LCSW, I believe. So I do think that that needs to be looked at once more because many, many, many neighbors have concerns about parking impacts and traffic impacts in that area.
You've used your time, so we're going to dive into a couple of questions if we can. One is, did you raise this issue about the location of the parking lot not being on the alley during the earlier hearing? I was looking for that in the response, and I didn't see what the hearings officer's response was to that.
They believed that the concrete wall was sufficient. They, so what they decided to do is build a concrete wall between Cliff's property and the proposal.
All right. Well, that's, I have a different concern, which is if we have alleys, we ought to be using them, but that's perhaps not germane to this hearing. Okay, other questions?
What was the alternative that you proposed or anyone's proposed about where the parking should go? Because it seems to me if you put it at the other end of the property, you also have the challenge of putting parking on an intersection and a corner. And we, our zoning code encourages putting buildings, you know, not parking at the street level like that. So was there, was there an alternative proposal at some point that the neighborhood put forward about where the parking should be?
I believe, I believe we've said that the parking should be on the alleyway side. Now, if you picture the corner, the property's like this, they're proposing it's right here, like this is the actual corner. Here's a road, here's a road. And I'm just saying it should go right here. It'd basically be in the same place, but just on the opposite corner, and it would be adjacent to an alleyway rather than someone's home. Does that make sense?
It's shown in the diagram too, yeah. Okay, other questions?
Did you have other issues that you didn't get to in your prepared remarks?
Just about the adjustment, I think the whole purpose of an adjustment is, the whole purpose of that law is to prevent a concentration of group living uses in a residential neighborhood, right? That is kind of the purpose. So to trump that purpose with just another building owned by the same company seems frivolous. I don't, they have plenty of other places they could be building this and it would still serve the same function. So basically, that would be the reason that we think the adjustment shouldn't be granted. But we also are saying that the conditional use should not be granted.
Can I just ask you a philosophical question? Let's say that instead of this use, a developer came in and put, how many houses would fit here, do you know?
They are claiming six.
And let's say that someone came in and built six homes, and each property owner decided to bring two foster children in for a total of 12. What would be the different impact on the neighborhood?
It would be different because those would be separate homes. It would be consistent with what looks, the character of the neighborhood, right? Which is part of the conditions, is a building that's consistent with what the neighborhood already looks like. We have individual homes, most of the homes are under 1,000 square feet. The proposal, I think, is several thousand square feet, so it would be noticeably different than the character of the neighborhood. And while we do have modern buildings and less modern buildings, you know, 1975, 1920-built houses, it would still be consistent with a neighborhood feel rather than a group living feel. Does that make sense?
Other questions? Okay, let's, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let's take supporters of the appeal, individual supporters of the appeal.
I have two people, Dylan Cruz and Allison McManus.
Come on up, please.
Welcome. Good afternoon.
Thank you very much. Hello. Hello. My name is Dylan Cruz. I'm a resident at 8811 North Dana Avenue, for the record. Thanks for the opportunity to be here today. You know, I know that we'll have some conversations after this about the organizations, Bridge Meadows, New Meadows, the tenants, the type of program that's being implemented, the need for these services within our community and the city. No one's disputing those. I'm certainly not disputing those needs or those purposes. This is a social program, it's a group living facility, these are things that we need to do. No one's trying to stop those purposes. What we are trying to talk about today is the design of the facility. I have been involved in the focus group and I've been working on this project as well as with the developers since the beginning. And what we are simply asking and have asked for from the beginning gets to, Commissioner Fish, your question, your philosophical question. We want houses. We want individual buildings. We want this facility to be broken up instead of having an apartment complex on an area zoned for residential houses in a community with small, single-family homes in our neighborhood. Building houses, breaking up this facility into smaller units does a number of things. One, it still allows them to administer their program on that same site. Two, to that point about how many buildings we could build there, they can still house the same number of tenants. Four four-bedroom houses, five three-bedroom, six three-bedroom, there's multiple options, but they can still house the same number of tenants on the property. And if they do that, they can maintain the existing R5 designation and respect the wishes of the homeowners, the individuals and the tenants who have been opposing this project and asking questions about why it has been designed the way it has. It's a win-win for everyone. We think it's a reasonable compromise. It also provides a contingency option. Things change, the uses of a facility changes, it's being managed by a nonprofit, it's contingent on funding in the long run. If we're building a very unique group living facility with a very specific purpose and four, five, six years down the line, things change in those circumstances as far as their funding and administration changes, we have a problem on our hands at the neighborhood. But if it's individual buildings or homes, we can sell off those assets and do something different with the site. The other thing I want to add is that this is not an isolated complaint. I mean, we're here today, we've taken time off of work to come here, but we do have a petition from 29 homeowners and individuals in the immediately adjacent area that are affected by this, that have opposed and objected to a number of the criteria. You have multiple letters from homeowners in the affected neighborhood, and you also have the appeal from the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association. So this is not one grumpy neighbor. This is a large group of neighbors, the neighborhood, who are asking serious questions and coming forward with some alternative proposals. And the last comment that I want to make, and I think it follows up on our last discussion, is thinking about development, thinking about equity in the city. That matters to us. I've been involved in the focus group since the beginning, and we have been repeatedly told that we need to make this work. It needs to meet the needs of the developer. We have to compromise on this. We have to do what they need to do so they can implement their project. But for those of us that live in the neighborhood, those of us that have bought homes there, those of us who are looking to move there, it's important that we're maintaining that single-family home status. And so we think there's a reasonable, balanced compromise that is equitable for everyone involved, that lets New Meadows do what they want to do with the same number of tenants and respects the wishes and the desires of homeowners, and we have that compromise and proposal in front of you now. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Allison McManus. I'll try not to say too many things that have already been said. So I'm an owner of one of the 1,000 square foot homes on the street. I have a 5,000 square foot lot. So small home, big lot, that's kind of the gist of what our neighborhood looks like. I also don't oppose the New Meadows program. I oppose the building scale and size and the impact it may have on the quality of life of some of my neighbors. In my neighborhood, we already have a group living facility within 200 feet of the proposal, so they need an adjustment. Usually it's a 600-foot minimum. Part of the Bridge Meadows conditional use, it was recognized that their group living facility portion of their project is different than the internal neighborhood on North Hunt. They actually built only homes, triplexes and duplexes in the inner part of the neighborhood, and they left their group living facility on North Willis, which is a major thoroughfare over 1,000 feet wide in a two-lane connector. In this case, we've asked multiple times if those same criteria of what really is considered compatible with the inner neighborhood is looked at in this case as well. Like we've talked about, there's multiple buildings that could go onto this property and still house the same number of tenants. So I just don't really understand why we're not looking at the same kind of compatible uses for this conditional use and this adjustment than we did several years ago with the Bridge Meadows conditional use. I really think we have an opportunity to find compromise between the homeowners and the New Meadows people on this project by scaling down the buildings or looking at a multiple building design. We continue to debate what the definition of compatible is and if the New Meadows facility as proposed is compatible with the neighborhood. Some of the definitions of compatible are being able to exist without conflict or designed to work with another system without modification. We're here today talking about this, so clearly there's still a conflict happening, and we're talking about what adjustments need to take place so that this can happen as proposed. So we're asking for a modification as well. I mean, clearly we're not meeting the definition of compatible at this point. I think we have the opportunity to. In my opinion, this isn't an all or nothing issue. I think there's room for compromise between the New Meadows group and the local homeowners. And overall, I think compromise will be the best solution and have the best long-term effect on the success of this project and the future of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both. Questions? Thank you. Any other supporters of the appeal? Okay, so then let's move, please, to the applicant opposing the appeal.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, commissioners. For the record, my name is Sarah Stoffer-Curtis, and I'll warn you, I'm a land use lawyer with Stillreaves Law Firm. Appearing today on behalf of the applicant, Bridge Meadows. I'm going to let the other members of the team do most of the speaking about this project and the work the applicant has done to work with the Neighborhood Association and carefully consider feedback from neighbors and others. But I did want to respond just briefly to one point about the nature of this proposed use and the spacing between these two group living uses. The nature of the use and the spacing is precisely why we are before you today, and the applicant is... use and the spacing between these two group living uses. The nature of the use and the spacing is precisely why we are before you today and the applicant is seeking conditional use and adjustment approval. If the proposed use was a household living use and we were talking about individual houses, houses here, the use would be allowed outright and there would be no land use process required. What we have recognized as a community, however, is that there are times when we need our land use standards to be somewhat flexible, enough to allow for well-designed proposals that are not allowed outright within a particular zone. In those instances, the city opposes additional standards to make sure that there will be, not be significant impacts on the neighborhood and the surrounding community. That is precisely what has occurred here. The city has applied its standards and found that they have been met. And for that reason, we ask that you deny the appeal and affirm the hearing officers of approval. With that, I'm going to let the other team members address the specifics of the proposal.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sean Sub. I'm the Executive Director at New Avenues for Youth. And forgive me, I'm going to speak very quickly because we have limited time. First, I want to thank the mayor and the city council for the opportunity to respond to this appeal and share more about the proposed New Meadows project. Many of you are familiar with New Avenues and know the work that we do with homeless youth in the Portland community, including over the past 20 years, operating a number of different, highly effective housing programs. Some of you also know about our organization's commitment to preventing youth homelessness through our work with youth transitioning out of foster care. New Avenues is currently one of the main providers for life skill transition services for foster care youth in the state. We began doing this work because we recognized a strong relationship between kids aging out of foster care and those becoming long-term homeless youth. This is especially true of those in foster care who become teen parents and lack broader family and community support systems. I know this council understands and appreciates the impact of homelessness and the impact homelessness is having on our community and the need now, more than ever, to come up with creative and collaborative solutions. For the past three years, New Avenues and Bridge Meadows have worked together to develop the New Meadows project to address significant gap and need in our community. The New Meadows project responds to the displacement of, in North Portland, of youth from communities of color and youth coming from some of our community's most impoverished families. The project leverages the strengths of our two organizations, creating wraparound services, providing opportunities for foster youth to learn and practice skills and the chance to have long-term, meaningful relationships with adults. You'll further hear from our team about the intentionality and the neighborhood consideration we put into the design, how the design is focused on developmentally, what these young people need most to be successful, and how we, we plan to and are working with the North Portland community to help these young people have successful transition to adulthood.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hales and Council members. I am Dorinda Schubert, Executive Director of Bridge Meadows. And as my colleague Sean has said, we have worked diligently between our boards and our leadership staff to come together and leverage our collective strength and our expertise. For the last five years, as you know, Bridge Meadows has helped foster youth by providing them with forever families, supporting their adoptive families so that they are strong and thrive and providing meaning and purpose to elders as they serve as their grandparents and mentors to the kids. In the five years that we've opened Bridge Meadows and thereby our city of Portland, has received national recognition and awards for this innovation. New Avenues for Youth has also received recognition for their innovation. The use of, the youth of New Meadows will have high-quality housing built by the Home Builders Foundation, led by Renaissance Homes, and designed by Carlton Heart Architecture. Our resident advisor will live on-site with the youth, providing real-time support. The youth will have access to academic, vocational and health services through New Avenues' high, high-quality programming. And additionally, there will be a significant amount of intergenerational community support to these youth, providing them with that last leg of importance support, family. The proximity of New Meadows to Bridge Meadows is a critical factor in creating those lifelong bonds and relationships. It's always been Bridge Meadows' intention to be a good neighbor. Each week, elders from the surrounding community attend Tai Chi and neighborhood children play at Bridge Meadows, just like any other neighborhood kids. We do have a good neighborhood agreement. We developed that several years ago and I did provide that to the current president because she could not find it. Until recently, the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association meetings had been held at Bridge Meadows for well over two years, which allowed our elders easy access to those meetings. In addition to the Bridge Meadows and New Avenues for Youth leadership staff and our boards or directors, the community members of Bridge Meadows cannot wait to welcome these youth home and provide them with the support that they need to live successful lives. Thank you.
Could you just hold, hold up for a minute? Were, were both of your points made to the hearings officer? Because I don't see any reference to them in the findings.
Exactly which points, Commissioner?
Well, the points about the, the wraparound services and the proximity to...
Yes.
Yeah, the, that was, that is in the record.
Dorinda was traveling during the hearing, but I presented, and I presented all of those points as part of my testimony to hearings officer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Brian Carlton. I'm with Carlton Heart Architecture and have been very proud to be associated with this project. I've got a presentation that unfortunately I can't get below 15 minutes and I only have nine minutes left. So I'm going to dance around a little bit for your sake as well because I, I, a lot of what I had to say, you've, you've seen up on the screen and have heard as well. I do want to take you through a little bit of the process we've gone through though and, and hopefully address some of the comments that have been made by our neighbors in their appeal. This is the original design that we first worked on. It was designed, it is designed as a single building. It was designed to be modern, appealing to the, to the young adults that we would be inviting here to live and really wanted to have that energy and that appeal to young adults. More importantly, I wanted to point to the, the floor plan that we're showing here, which is a single building. And it's, it's a collection of studio and one-bedroom efficiency apartments, very small apartments, with a community space, collective space that provides a central kitchen, dining, living room, that gives us a lot of opportunity for community development amongst the youth. And also, one of our apartments is for a resident assistant, resident manager to live here full-time. It's really important in this design, and I'm going to go ahead and read just to keep myself on, on focus here. "It's critical to the program of New Meadows that the residential setting encourage regular contact between the residents and with their resident assistant. The shared lounge, kitchen, dining and counseling spaces encourage communication and relationship building. Internal front doors along the corridor allow the resident assistant to watch over his or her flock and keep an eye on residents and identify people who need encouragement or assistance along the way." So this concept of a single building is really critical to the mission and to the program. And the idea that we're bringing people who might be subject to tendency towards isolation and we're really trying to bring them into a community setting where they can mutually support each other and get that assistance from the resident assistant. We've heard loud and clear, and I'm going to quickly transition to, this was the design that we presented to the Neighborhood Association and this, this is some of the feedback that we got. And we heard loud and clear the desire for single-family homes. It, it's come up in every discussion we've had. We've acknowledged that all, along the way. And quite honestly, we have tried to explain our position at every meeting that we've had, where it's just absolutely critical to the program that these young adults are living in close proximity to each other and whether you call it supervision or guidance, where that resident assistant really has that constant contact with these folks and is really helping them develop their life skills and launch them into adulthood. The, the idea of breaking them up into separate homes, while that works for certain groups of people and, and certain people with upbringings that allow for that type of socialization, we've been very clear that we're working with kids who don't have that background, who don't have those skills, those socialization skills. And we really need them in close proximity to each other to, to really make this work. So we have continued to show the single building concept. This is a quick rundown, a lot of what you've heard already today, of, of some of the concerns the, the neighbors expressed beyond that in terms of scale, size, also setbacks and more front yard appearances, that type of thing. And, and we have talked about the parking. I'll come to that here in a bit. So this is the revised plan that has taken that single building and really worked hard to break it into smaller, more home-like components. We've, we used inspiration from the neighborhood and some of the newer infill development. In terms of the proportions we used, we've created these notches in the building and single-story elements to try to create the, the massing and scale of single-family homes. This is, gives you a description of how we've created notches in the building and, and tried to set the massing up to be more reflective of what's being built in the neighborhood. This, this slide demonstrates that those notches in the building actually were set to reflect the typical spacing in some of the infill development that's happening, skinny homes and infill homes, the distance between those homes within the neighborhood. The photos that you're seeing are all taken from the neighborhood. The site, we've increased landscape areas and setbacks to create more front yard space and introduced some additional landscape features to try to soften that and, and create that front yard. We also did agree to introduce the, the CMU wall along our northern property line as well as a cedar fence along the alley to provide more buffer. If I could take an opportunity to address the, the parking issue, we did look at multiple schemes to try to look at how we could potentially relocate that parking. We did look at parking along the alley. We were told by P-Bot that in order to use the alley, it wasn't a matter of just relocating a light pole as well as several underground electrical facilities. We'd have to fully pave the alley. We'd have to introduce stormwater treatment facilities to the alley. The, the budget for that was quickly getting into the six-figure range. So it was, it's not a simple fix to just park along the alley, given P-Bot requirements to improve that alley.
Don't you have the same stormwater requirements for the parking lot to the north?
Yes, but it's, it's a much more consolidated lot that is, is much more contained. We'd have to take that alley, develop a 20-foot wide street and add all of the facilities for that.
If the city's requirements were more reasonable, if, for example, we allowed you to use pavers and sand in an alley that's now dirt and access a parking lot from an alley that once again becomes functional as an alley, would that make this more practical? Instead of requiring you to build a 20-foot street where none such exists and where the rest of the alley is not that and isn't likely to be, I'm frustrated with our own bureau, as you can tell by my tone of voice. We either have alleys or we don't. If we have them, we ought to figure out how to use them. This isn't just your problem, but I'm just trying to figure out why we're not letting applicants solve this problem instead of walk away from it.
I, I don't have a simple answer to that. There are always unintended consequences and every time we try to use alternative paving or modular paving, it ends up costing more for some reason. And we can all sit here and break that down. It's not an easy answer. I think programmatically, and I don't, I'm going to feel the daggers from behind me from my staff who have reinvented this project several times over, programmatically it does some nice things for us if we're parking off the alley. And, and we believe we could potentially rearrange the site to make that work. It just, it truly is cost prohibitive at this point for what we know.
Okay, thank you. Okay. I'm sorry, we, we interrupted you. You have any other points you want to make? Sorry, go ahead.
In terms of compatibility, we, we really did try, and we do believe we are, from a design perspective, being compatible with the neighborhood. It is, it is a mixed neighborhood. It's got diversity of development and housing types in it. All of these photos are of projects that are within three blocks, three to four blocks of the site. And this isn't, this isn't including the Bridge Meadows development. It's not including any of the New Columbia development. These are old-established developments in the site and newer infill of residential... Okay, we did include Bridge Meadows. I apologize. There's also examples of some larger homes that are being developed on the site that are maximizing their, their site capacity. We did take very seriously the issue of what could be developed on this site in terms of our analysis of compatibility. You know, the ability to develop, develop six homes and if you've got a family of four to five people in those homes, you're quickly outdistancing the capacity of New Meadows, which we've set at 19 residents. We also believe that because of who our residents are going to be, we've got a disproportional reliance on mass transit and bikes. So I think, we feel we've got a lesser impact on traffic and parking in the neighborhood.
What is the outbuilding?
Uh, that is a trash enclosure, just a small sitting porch attached to it.
Can I just ask, why do you need onsite parking? Why is that, why is that central to the design? I mean, there is, there is on-street parking. There might be other, other ways to...
We felt it important in terms of a gift to the neighborhood or recognition of the neighborhood's concern for parking, that we felt it important to have a certain amount of onsite parking.
But there's nothing programmatically that drives that?
You're not required to provide onsite parking, are you?
For all the discussion we've had, I don't have the exact answer to that.
Is there, is there a school bus that gets parked here?
I, I believe we actually have to have a minimum number of spots onsite. I don't think we're totally exempt from parking on this site.
Okay, we'll check with staff on that question.
Okay. And I apologize, this is an issue that we hashed out a year ago and I'm trying to remember what we hashed out. So. But we did feel that it important in terms of our addressing neighborhood concerns that we provided a certain amount of parking onsite.
Can I, can I just add that there were a lot of very vocal neighbors that were very upset at the idea of there not being parking and we settled on what was the required amount, not more, not less.
Right, which also had neighbors that were vocally concerned about green space. So they lost and the people that wanted parking won. So I'm not sure if that was a good bargain and we'll talk with staff about that.
And, and, and we, we did have resident, neighbors who asked that same question. Why do you have parking onsite?
Presumably some of your young adults will have cars that they need to drive to their, to work and there may not be enough spaces on the street.
Correct. We also feel pertinent to our request for an adjustment for the distance. We also feel that it's very important that this New Meadows program was conceived to be a sister program or feeding off of the success of Bridge Meadows and the adoptive families that we have there and the elders that we have there. And so that proximity and the ability for residents of New Meadows to travel quickly and easily over to Bridge Meadows and more importantly, the residents and specifically the elders to be able to travel quickly and easily over to New Meadows is a key part of the program in terms of developing a sense of community with, with these young adults and of a community of people who understand what they've been through, understand their background and are there to help them launch into their life. So that, that proximity, as Sarah said earlier, is really important in terms of accommodating this program and really building it for success. I believe that is all I have with a minute to spare.
Mayor, I have a question, but could you indulge me for a second and ask their attorney to come back for a moment?
Sure, would you please?
So thank you for your presentation. There was a comment made by an opponent that I want to give your attorney a chance to answer because I just would, would, since you do land use work, I'd be interested in your, your take. She said in so many words that there were now an abundance of non-residential facilities in the neighborhood which were beginning to change the character. Now frankly, I think typically we don't think about schools and rec centers as being facilities that change the character of our residential neighborhood. In fact, we have residential neighborhoods around the country beating, beating down our door to, for us to put a community center or other amenity in their backyard. But, but she referred to a school, Rosa Parks, Charles Jordan, a church and Bridge Meadows and now we're doing New Meadows. So let's take the, the community facilities out of the equation and say Bridge Meadows has been a success. That's the neighborhood. New Meadows has been spawned from that. If that goes forward, it will likely be a success. At what point do we have to consider concentration when we are in effect building on the success of something which after all is seeking a conditional use to operate in a neighborhood for which it wasn't initially envisioned? At what point does concentration become a factor that we are required to consider?
Right. Well, I think that that's a really, it's a really appropriate question for this type of review. It's the reason the city has a spacing standard to begin with that would require that these types of group living types of group living uses, generally speaking, be spaced at a distance from one another so you don't have uses that are non-household living uses in character overwhelming a particular neighborhood. What I think is important about this adjustment process is that you evaluate these cases on a case-by-case basis, and so here you have a well-designed proposal, and there is a reason for there to be an adjustment of the spacing standard. You've evaluated all of the key factors related to impacts to the neighborhood. And the fact is, is that if another, yet another group living use were to come into the Portsmouth Neighborhood Association and ask for approval, then, you know, you consider that question as these uses are proposed. So where that, I, you know, do we know it when we see it? Where that tipping point is, I'm not sure. I would submit, however, that in this instance, I think this is, these are two organizations that have a track record of success. This is a well-designed proposal, and in this instance, I think an adjustment is very appropriate.
So I, and I think you make that point very effectively. I'm just, I'm contemplating that there will be the son of Bridge Meadows, son of New Meadows, where the argument is we're building on success, proximity, shared services, and I just, I'm just trying to get my head around, at what point is there a line where we say, actually, no, you're now changing the character of the neighborhood by doing this on an ad hoc basis? And you're saying we should look at these things on a case-by-case basis and apply the criteria? I'm just flagging that it's, that at some point in this, I think there is a line that we have to tackle. I'm not sure what it is.
Commissioner, I think you put your finger on it, that it is a discretionary decision, and each one is considered case-by-case. I don't think I remember two entire pages in the hearings office's decision dealing with one criterion on the specific one. And also, an in-depth discussion of the definition of large, which comparing it with the, what large meant by the same hearings officer in a previous decision. So I think it is something that grows a bit over and over by time, and that's why, as has been stated, that we look at each one and we listen to both sides and make a discretionary decision.
There's an old expression, "I went to the fights and a hockey game broke out." And I think here, roughly, the analogy is, I moved into a residential neighborhood, and at some point, all these wonderful, wonderful group homes and programs run by blue-chip nonprofits started coming in. And we're doing this under conditional use, so we're saying, in each instance, there is a, you know, we are potentially saying there's, there is compelling public policy reasons to do this. But since an opponent raised the question of concentration, I wasn't persuaded with the concentration argument when she brought Rosa Parks and Charles Jordan in, because I think in most residential areas in the city, they would love to have a high-performing elementary school and a great community center. But here, there is this question in the back of my mind about, at what point do you get to that tipping point where you actually are fundamentally changing the character of the neighborhood? So, thank you.
Other additional points you want to make?
Just real quickly, I do want to, just, one comment was made by the appellant that pertains to Commissioner Fish's comments about when is enough enough? In really making sure we're characterizing this program appropriately, we're not providing treatment. These are not patients here. This is a group living situation, it's not an institutional function. We're providing counseling and training for these young folks. And so, in a lot of ways, it is another residential option in a diverse neighborhood.
And actually, Brian, I would say, I listened carefully to the opponents, and I didn't hear anyone picking a fight over the people who are staying there or the services being provided. So that's why I'm focused on design, scale, compatibility, and really about how many conditional uses are we going to allow in an area where it then begins to change? I didn't, and I think it's great that you mentioned that, but I didn't really hear an opposition based on programmatically.
I agree, and I was only responding to words I heard. And I'd actually, if I could take a second and add, it's something that I said several times over and went back to the office and talked about. It's actually been a pleasure working with this neighborhood association and the representatives in this case. It's been contentious at times, and it's been a little bit frustrating at times as we've tried to explain the program. It's been a very respectful relationship throughout, and having been in many neighborhoods throughout Portland proposing projects that people weren't really excited about having across the street from them, they've done an incredible job of staying focused on the issues and on the concerns, and quite frankly, throughout the hearings process on the approval criteria. And I do want to compliment them for their work on this.
I just have one further question. Do any of you know whether the Bridge Meadows approval required a good neighbor agreement or required to try to have a good neighbor agreement?
It did.
Required one?
It required you to have one?
Yes, Commissioner Fish did, and Greg Wilhelm, the former president, and I worked on that together collaboratively and created a document that stood the test of time.
And what I'm hearing is that you're very willing to do that in this case also?
Yes, we are.
And so, and I heard from the neighborhood association that should the appeal not prevail, that they were willing to meet as well, so I think we can have some language that would get to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much. So, individual supporters of the, opponents of the appeal, are there any signed up?
We have two signed up, Kevin George and Kurt Krueger.
Kurt was here as a resource.
Yeah, he was here just then.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin George, and I work for the Department of Human Services as a child well-being program manager for children welfare, or child welfare services. As a part of my job is program and policy development for children, youth, and young adults in foster care, and for developing transitional services for supports for youth, young adults who are exiting the foster care system without a permanent family or a permanent support network as they move towards successful adulthood. I thank you for this opportunity to speak in support of New Meadows, a project to assist young adults' transition from foster care. In the last 12 months, there were 78 young people in Multnomah County alone who exited the foster care system without a permanent family to provide that ongoing support, safety net, as these people launch into adulthood. Most often, as these young people leave foster care after the age of 18, these young adults move into their first apartment, into someone else's house or apartment with little to no support on how to navigate the world, living independently. And most of us have had to fall back on for emotional support, had families to fall back on for emotional support, financial support, or to help us understand what it means when you get a water bill, electric bill, and a rent bill. Most young adults have positive caring adults, family, and friends to help them navigate this new world of adulthood. As a parent of three young adults currently in this phase of their life, I can fully appreciate the need for positive caring support in navigating the new world. The young adults from foster care do not have the positive caring support they need so much as, need so much, so programs such as New Meadows is the right program for them. What is unique about New Meadows is the intentional connections and relationship to supportive caring adults. The community connections to the young, to the youth engaged in their own community, and the demonstrated success of peer-to-peer group living in a semi-structured environment. There are other examples in Oregon of young adult transition models for former foster youth. Lane County has Neighborhood Economic Development Corporation has a 12-unit apartment in Eugene transitioning foster youth. Salem has Center Court Commons through Catholic Community Services, and they developed a supportive dorm-style apartment where they are transitioning youth out of foster care. And in the Dalles, the Next Door program has had a model for years assisting transition to adulthood. While these programs have been success, they are also limited to provide these young adults with the intentional connection to supportive adults and fully engage them in their community, which will be a significant component of the New Meadows program. I am most excited about the opportunity to have these young adults learn from and develop relationships with the older population. Often, this is where the culture and community values are found and can be passed on from to young adults who do not have opportunities to develop this type of relationship. Respect for elders and culture must be learned, valued, and passed on. The intentionality of the shared living space is critical to the success of this program. The Department of Services has worked with Bridge Meadows and New Avenues for Youth for a number of years, and has seen their individual and organizational commitment to quality and services for children and families. New Avenues has been committed to ensure young adults in Multnomah County have options other than the streets to move to, to adulthood. They have been instrumental in taking a holistic approach to young adults in research, best practice models, to develop comprehensive service. The New Meadows project will not only be a tremendous resource for young adults experiencing this program, but will further enhance the overall positive experience the Bridge Meadows residents and that community. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, now, there's an opportunity for the.
Kurt Krueger's going to.
Oh, sorry, no Kurt. Oh, that, okay. Sorry.
Good afternoon, for the record. My name's Kurt Krueger, I'm the director of the Portland Housing Bureau, 421 Southwest 6th, Suite 500, Portland, Oregon 97204. I wanted to speak in favor of New Meadows and in opposition to the appeal. First, I do want to respect the Portsmouth neighborhood. Neighborhoods that value their neighbors and their neighborhoods are, should contest change in their neighborhood. I don't think any one of us would want to live in a community that didn't care enough to raise issues and to press forward their case. But in this instance, we don't think that there's a reason to reverse the hearings and examiner decision. It's also important, for the record, that you know that we have a million dollars from the City of Portland Housing Bureau budget supporting New Meadows, $800,000 for construction and $200,000 for soft costs.
Was that presented at the hearing?
Yes, Carl Dinkelspiel was a witness at the hearing. And he's an employee of the Housing Bureau and a manager of our housing investment fund. The emancipated youth is the term of art in our industry, when youth, foster youth, age out of the system. And I always thought it was a little bit of a sardonic term, because emancipation talks about freedom, right? But in this instance, freedom in a very tight housing market, freedom without resources, means often that these youth are the most vulnerable in our society. They are victimized, and they're often preyed upon by older adults. So, group quarters that allow some means of shared costs really helps them succeed in life moving forward. In this instance, the property will have 19 individuals, of which a few will be small children. If it were developed in single-family density, which is permitted, there would be a capacity for six single-family homes. And under the Title 33 definition of a household, one or more persons related by blood or marriage, domestic partnership, legal adoption, guardianship, plus five additional people, you could have six people per house in six homes, or 36 total individuals, whose behavior is going to be totally random and up to their own standards of behavior. So, by having 19 individuals supervised in a group setting, connected to programmatically by the nearby Bridge Meadows, this is actually less dense than it would be if it was developed as single-family detached homes, which what you're hearing is, people want single family. We believe at the Housing Bureau that the connectivity between the two programs is essential to their success. There is mentoring and role modeling for the youth by the elders nearby. There is staff supervision and double coverage of staff supervision by the two properties, and maintenance and repair staff can respond more quickly to any request to provide repair and replacement needs. So we think that this is overall a good solution to a community-wide problem. And I do want to underscore that these kids are from North Portland, they're not being imported from someplace else.
Thank you.
And Kurt, the question that preceded you from an opponent was, what happens if this program, for some reason, discontinued? We've got a conditional use, you're an investor, the city is an investor in this, what happens to the building?
Well, if they went out of business, I think we would want to secure our lien rights in the property and make sure that another responsible nonprofit were engaged to operate the facility.
Would that come back to us on a conditional use?
Yes, it would have to, if it was a different use, it would have to, not a different operator.
You know, we have a regulatory agreement that will run 60 years, so we have, through that regulatory agreement, the means by which to replace the operator.
If there was a change in operator or a change in use, would you bring that back to council?
The commissioner in charge, I'm not sure that it would come to council, but the commissioner in charge at the time would have ultimate approval authority.
Well, can you put in the regulatory agreement that the council would be notified of any change in operator or use?
I don't see a problem with that.
It's a potential condition.
I just think that gives the council notice. Council didn't, I saw the council nodding or not blanching. It goes in the regulatory, so that someone has an obligation to tell council if there isn't contemplated change.
So you're just concerned about the operator, or it going to something completely different?
Both.
Because if it was going to something different, then it would have to come back.
If it was a different use, it would have to come back.
Well, I'm just thinking, we've got the hook of a regulatory agreement to make explicit that that comes to council, and we may not be here when that event happens, I just want to have someplace where it's memorialized.
All right, thank you, Kurt.
We have no opposition to that. Thank you very much.
All right, is there anyone else that wants to speak? Now, the appellant, you have the opportunity for rebuttal of any of the testimony that you've heard. If you'd like to avail yourself of that, come on up.
I'll just try to cover a couple of points they brought up, although I would love to talk for longer than that. We obviously heard from the other testimony as well as mine, we agree that it's an honorable organization providing an important service to the community, that's not being judged here, that's also not part of the conditions. I'd also like to note, he just spoke that the youth would be from North Portland, but we heard prior testimony from Sean Sui saying that they could come from all over, from other states even, so that was inconsistent. But in their testimony, I didn't actually hear anything about them meeting the conditions, the legal conditions, I didn't hear much about the law. They stated what they needed to have their program work, which was a single building and to be in close proximity to the Bridge Meadows. And I just want to show you on the map, provided the zoning map, this little star I put right here, there's a road here called Trenton, it's just off the map. There's an empty lot there owned by Portland Housing Authority in an R2 zone that would perfectly suit their needs. A person would need to walk a couple blocks in order to reach Bridge Meadows. I presented this to them prior, and they just completely disregarded me. But I think that if they want their needs met, they can do it, they just can't do it with this property. I believe that it's not too much to ask for them to either consider single homes, and this isn't a density thing, this is a character of the neighborhood thing, which is part of what the law says, it's not changing the character of the neighborhood, it's not impactful on the character of the neighborhood. So we would require either single homes, or that there be distance between group living facilities. And what Commissioner Fish brought up was exactly my concern. At what point will this concentration be enough that there's finally a rejection of a proposal? And I'd like to point out that the dilapidated property directly across the street, that is owned currently by a property development place, it doesn't look like it does in the pictures anymore. So that's going to be developed. And the property right back here is also being purchased, I believe, by a developer. So bear in mind, there's other properties that this could happen. If we're just continuing to allow it, it's setting a precedent that this neighborhood is a group living facility neighborhood. And the people that bought homes here that spent thousands and thousands of dollars, the neighbors that have been coming to me and coming to the Neighborhood Association, they made investments in a neighborhood, a single-family home neighborhood. And it seems disrespectful to them to not listen to their concerns, to not at least respect maybe making a little bit bigger of a distance, or respect maybe having separate houses. If they want their program's needs met, they can absolutely do it, it just would be a couple blocks away. And we're not simply contesting a change to our neighborhood, we're contesting the character of the neighborhood. We want an R5 zone, that's what we, you know, when I bought my house, I looked at the zoning, and I looked, what can people do? And I didn't think that not only would somebody be asking for a conditional use, but also an adjustment. That's, that seems like quite a bit to ask if we're trying to maintain a neighborhood, a single-family home area. I mean, I have some time, so I might as well just check if there's anything else I want And I understand that it may be difficult to deny the applicant's proposal considering their social purpose and that they're doing good in the community. However, it's important that we follow the law regardless of that message. If a proposal does not meet the necessary conditions, it should be denied. The applicant has every ability to create a building or achieve their social message in a way that is compatible with existing laws and regulations. They have that ability, and they can do that. I believe that they will be able to do that, especially with the knowledge of how much money they're getting from Portland Housing Bureau. They are going to be able to build this in a place that's more appropriate, or they can build houses in the land that they've already purchased. I think that's all. Thank you so much for listening to me today, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. So I have some questions for staff, so I'd like to ask Kathleen to come back up, and also Kurt Krueger, the other Kurt in the room, because I want to return to the parking issue.
We have some BES people, although not our experts on. We have some BES people, although not our experts on the issue that-
Yeah, okay, BES would be a factor here. But, okay, so the key test, well, one of the key tests in this case, and it's been extensively discussed in everyone's testimony, is that the proposed development would have to significantly lessen the overall residential appearance and function of the neighborhood, right? We've heard from the appellant that they don't believe that the project has, and we've heard from the proponent that they think it does. There, there are two ways, I would say, in which this proposal is different than the prevailing pattern of the neighborhood. One, it's a bigger building, and two, it has a parking lot. So let me return to the parking lot question. Why, what is the provenance of the parking lot? Did the applicant propose it and did PBOD approve it, or did PBOD require it?
Kathleen Stokes, BDS staff, and I have actually two or three clarifications, but answering the question about the parking lot, first of all, and I know there was a question like, why are they having the parking spaces? Well, the zoning code requires parking for residential uses and most residential uses. And the standard for group living uses is one space per four residents. So the nineteen residents here triggers a requirement for five parking spaces onsite.
On site, okay, but, but let me interrupt you, because PBOD's report that's in the record says at this location, the city's transportation system plan classifies these streets for all transportation nodes, and that local streets provide local circulation for traffic pedestrians and bicycles, and except in special circumstances, should provide on-street parking. Why are we not relying on on-street parking to meet the need?
We generally look at the, the code required onsite parking, and, but it's only one space per residential unit normally, or one space per four residents. Most residential uses generate more parking. We don't require that additional parking for visitors and other people to be onsite. That's where the on-street parking can be used. And as far as the, the questions about the location of the parking area and the alley improvements, Mr. Krueger here has, I believe, some additional information.
I'd just like to make the point, especially since we haven't gotten to our next item yet. The code requires the five spaces Ms. Stokes just said. The applicant did not request an adjustment to that.
Right, I get it. I get it. So, no, that's-
Why are we discussing-
I wanted to know what the provenance of it was, because Mr. Carlton, understandably, a year later wasn't sure. So it was our requirements, not their proposal.
Let me try to take a little stab. When we're doing a conditional use review, we're looking at the actual specific use that's proposed on the site.
Right.
Excuse me, Kurt Krueger with PBOD for the record. The code isn't exactly prescriptive as one space here or three spaces for this project. A church is a good example. We look at a church and we say, how many people are going to come to this church? What's the congregation size? How many cars are we going to expect? Then we try to determine how many spaces should be put onsite versus how many spaces might be used on the street. And we do this kind of discretionary review to determine what's appropriate for that particular use. In this particular case, we felt some amount of off-street parking should be provided so as not to completely use up all the on-street parking. This particular project is going to close two existing driveways that have been there when the PG substation was there. So we're gaining some on-street parking, we're losing it with the parking space, the parking lot. If the parking lot went away, we'd gain additional on-street public space.
All right, well, I won't chew on this much longer, but, because this may be an issue for our regulatory process, not for this proceeding. But do you look at the context in a conditional use case?
Yes.
So the context that I see, when I look at Google Earth, is there's one to two cars per block face parked on the streets of this neighborhood.
Oh, that's-
If this were Northwest Portland, where we've issued seven thousand parking permits for four thousand spaces, I could understand not relying on on-street spaces in the conditioning process. But in a context in which typically the parking load is nowhere near this, for future cases, I would hope to see us relying more on on-street parking.
Mayor, can I, can I just follow up on this?
I just want to follow up on that point.
I did, I did, go ahead. I have one follow-up.
Because I don't know what time of the day or night-
I don't either.
-that was taken. I, I need to kind of declare, it's not an ex parte contact, because I haven't discussed this particular case, but I have had dinner both at Bridge Meadows with Ms. Schubert and with Mary Margaret Webber Wheeler, who was one of the people who gave me house parties to collect five-dollar bills in my, one of my elections. So, and I go to the university, the Charles Jordan Community Center, lots as the Parks Commissioner. There's a lot of parking on the street. I, I mean, it's very difficult to find parking on the street.
Mayor, can I follow up as well?
Please.
Let's say that PBOD's requirement for this particular use was twenty-four parking spaces.
Right.
Well, we would certainly take a look at that, and, and that may mitigate against, that, that may weigh so heavily in our decision about changing the residential character that that could be, that could be a deal killer.
Right.
And so presumably, under those circumstances, they'd seek an adjustment.
Well, that's why, that's why I'm worrying this, Bone, not only because I'm anti-parking lot, but because we've got testimony in the record that most of the residents of this facility will rely on bicycles and transit for their movement around the city. Yes, the staff, some of the staff may drive to it. Did you require bicycle parking, by the way? Given that that's in the record.
There is bicycle parking, that is, it is required in the code and it is being provided through this proposal.
Well, the other thing, Mayor, is if, if you didn't have that parking and we were somehow able to unlock the mystery of the, of the, of the alleyway, the building actually might change in scale and height and some of the issues we've heard from the neighborhood. So this is not, this is not a, it's not an incidental matter, because they could use, they could potentially use the whole thing.
Exactly, that's where I'm hitting.
But what I, what, Kurt, what, if this was just as-of-right residential development, how many parking spaces would we require on the property?
I believe we'd require one per, per unit, one per house.
One per house.
A driveway per house as well.
Yeah, because again, the reason that the critical issues here are, does it significantly lessen the overall residential appearance and function? How does it change the, how does it differ? The reliance of, a great deal of the remaining portion of the site not occupied by a building is occupied by a parking lot. That's not typical. So that's different, but we may be stuck with it.
So I might suggest a couple of amendments to the conditions of approval and then to move denial of the appeal and-
All right, so, so are we, any other questions before we take a motion? Because we'll need to take a motion if someone wants to make one, but Kathleen?
Yes, I was wondering if I could make a couple of points of clarification on some of the things that were discussed here.
I don't think, I'm not sure you need to.
Not sure if you need to.
The clock is late. Why don't you let us model-
Yeah, we're going to make a tentative decision today, I think. So I think that's where we're headed.
Why don't we give Commissioner Fritz a chance to frame it? You'll tell us if we're out of our lane.
So what I was going to suggest as part of the motion is, condition A on page thirty-three of the hearings officer's decision says that the design should be as approved as indicated on exhibit C1 to C5. We might add onto that unless changes to the parking are negotiated in the Good Neighbor Agreement. And then under E, which was the one I was gnawing on at the very beginning of this hearing, to change, I, I very much appreciate that both sides say that they're willing to work on a Good Neighbor Agreement, and I hope that you will be able to get one. But just in case that doesn't happen, the, it should say in the fourth, fourth line down, must document that the New Meadows and Bridge Meadows representatives strived to meet in good faith with the Neighborhood Association for the purpose of bridging.
Okay, so Commissioner Fritz proposes those changes. Are you making those proposals in the context of an overall motion?
The context of, with those amendments, an overall motion to deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision with those two amendments.
This would be a tentative decision, second, second to that, tentative decision with those additional amendments. Are there any further amendments to the motion before we take a vote on it? Counsel?
And I just want to remind you that you want to make sure that it's clear on the record that the hearing is closed. And then with the tentative decision, we have to set a date and time certain to return.
Right, and we'll do that subsequent to acting on the motion. But this is, this is the closing of the, this is the conclusion of the hearing. We're going to take a vote on a tentative decision and set a date for findings.
Actually, Mayor, can I just ask Kurt one more question?
Sure.
Could we still theoretically agree to allow no on-street parking?
We would have to revise the findings to address the parking impacts that would not, without having a parking lot, that the surrounding on-street parking would be adequate to address.
There are findings that it's not.
Yeah, all right, all right, we're stuck with that. Okay, so roll call, please, on Commissioner Fritz's motion and those amendments that are included in it.
Saltzman?
Well, I appreciate the testimony of the neighborhood and, and also certainly of New Meadows and New Avenue for Youth, or Bridge Meadows and New Avenue for Youth. I'm very familiar with both organizations, know they are quality organizations. I am convinced they'll be good neighbors, and I think that, you know, there already seems to be a camaraderie between the neighbors. There is just a concern about whether New Meadows significantly alters the residential character of the neighborhood. I guess I reached the conclusion that it doesn't, and therefore I will support the recommendation of the hearings officer, as amended by Commissioner Fritz. Aye.
Aye.
Well, this is one of the most interesting decisions I've read from the hearings officer. Spectacular work by this, by Kathleen Stokes and other staff. Greg Franks should be very much commended for laying out all of the issues ahead of time and, and making findings as to why they were met. And major kudos to the Neighborhood Association, because it's obviously, you, you've been through it too, you know your stuff, you laid out the issues very clearly. And I, I think, I know that with the good hearts of both sides, that you'll be able to maybe make some modifications in the Good Neighbor Agreement. It's very clear that from the first design to the current one, it's much more compatible to the neighborhood, and I would expect that you may be able to find even more and make the Portsmouth neighborhood an even more wonderful place to be. And I think that the different examples of what's there right now are really evidence of why it's such a wonderful neighborhood. And thank you everybody for your participation in this. Aye.
This has been, I think, a terrific hearing, and I'm going to support the motion, but I'm going to express a couple of reservations. One is that, for me, it is significant that New Meadows has a relationship to Bridge Meadows. And I might have a different view if it was an entirely new program, different operations, with no connection to an existing use that has a, a Good Neighbor Agreement that is, that is functioning. Number two, I do think there is a concentration issue. I'm not sure we've triggered it, but I'm not sure where that line is. But I thought the appellant, who is not a lawyer, and made clear to us that, still made one of the more thoughtful arguments that we've had in one of these complex cases. And I, I do think that's an issue, and at some point, there may be a concentration issue. I'm not sure we've reached it here, but I, I think we're getting to the outer limits. And finally, what matters, a factor that I think is significant for my decision-making is the fact that there are, there were significant changes in the design from the original proposal to the current proposal. And, and as, as the architect and the team walked us through that, I, I think they were substantial changes that actually, in, in good faith, attempted to bring back a more residential character to the development. And I think that, that and, and the other testimony weighs in favor of, of denying the appeal. Aye.
Anything else?
It's a close call. I think the point has been made that people that invest in a residential neighborhood have a right to expect to then be one. The question here is significantly, and the hearings officer found that there is a difference, but it's not significant, given particularly the design improvements in the project that were made in, in, under pressure from the neighborhood. So I appreciate the fact that the applicant heard those concerns and attempted to respond to them. And then it looks to me like the livability issues as well that are also addressed, are going to be addressed by the Good Neighbor Agreement and the way this project is going to be operated. So I think on balance, the hearings officer did indeed get it right, and I'll support this decision. Aye. So that's a tentative decision. Do we want to set a date for findings?
Yes, that is, or will be, October 12th at 11:00 a.m., time certain.
Okay, so findings will come back to us, be on the calendar then, we'll address those then. Thank you all very much.
Mayor, two-minute break.
Two, one-minute break.
Mayor.
That means two minutes, and we will then take up the next item. And we will then take up the next item. Let's take item 1033, please.
Amend city code to revise process, investigation, and appeal provisions of complaints of police officer misconduct.
Adam Auditor.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I am City Auditor Mary Hall-Capietto. Constantine Sevier and I are here today with a proposal to amend city code chapters 3.20 and 3.21, which govern the police accountability system. Mr. Sevier is the Director of Independent Police Review in my office. Taken together, the changes we are proposing improve the overall quality and integrity of the oversight system and make it more efficient, effective, and equitable. They move the city closer to its desired outcomes by realigning responsibilities within the entities that investigate police officer misconduct allegations, streamlining the existing process to enable cases to move through it more efficiently, and enabling community members who have filed complaints to appear before the police bureau's internal review board. They are also responsive to terms included in the city settlement agreement with the U.S. Department of Justice. In May 2015, Director Sevier and I attended a meeting along with representatives of the police bureau in which justice officials made clear that the city's attempts to comply with accountability provisions in the agreement had fallen short of their expectations. They wanted the city to reduce its dismissal rate by investigating more complaints. They also preferred that investigators assigned to a case had the authority to provide an opinion on whether officers had violated police bureau policy. Both recommendations are included in these proposed changes. Other changes are related to how the Citizen Review Committee is organized to meet its wide-ranging responsibilities. Eleven community volunteers serve on the committee, which is an advisory body to my office and to the police commissioner. City Code expects much of them. They are required to conduct a minimum of four meetings per year, participate in various community meetings to hear concerns about police services, make policy recommendations to elected officials and city staff, advise on operations, hear appeals, raise awareness in the community about the oversight system, and participate in work groups to address short-term issues and needs. Committee members rightfully and repeatedly have expressed concerns about the workload placed on them. The committee's focus of late has been mostly consumed with hearing appeals of community members who disagree with how their cases were decided within the police bureau. Time spent preparing for an appeal and the hearing itself leaves few options for the volunteers to meet their other committee responsibilities. The city has also been unable to meet its obligation in the agreement to have appeals heard within 21 days. We are experiencing an increase in appeal requests and the current backlog extends to next June. To balance time demands on volunteers while increasing the frequency of hearings, this proposal authorizes cases to be heard by three-member panels instead of the full committee. Volunteers would be assigned to six or seven appeal dates in a year, freeing up time for participation in work groups and community outreach activities. The city is obligated to ensure a sound accountability system that will hold up under review. It also should provide authentic opportunities for public input on matters of policy. The current practice of combining appeal hearings with other items on the committee's monthly agenda ill serves the city's ability to deliver on both of these obligations. In addition to scheduling appeal hearings separate from other committee business, we propose reserving public comment for general meetings when the full committee is present. This will ensure that for appeals, the city can protect an officer's right to a fair and expedient process and keep the committee's focus on the appellant's immediate particular concerns. The point of the hearing is for committee members to assess whether an investigation was thorough and the findings were reasonable based on the evidence. The appeal becomes part of a record. They may subsequently be reviewed during grievance or civil service proceedings. It is reasonable to expect that a police chief or an arbitrator would question how certain comments affected an appeal, which could put a disciplinary decision in jeopardy. Public input in this context is misplaced. Audience members are not allowed access to the contents of a case file, so it's not uncommon for comments to be off-topic or emotionally charged. This presents a challenge for keeping order in the hearing and maintaining focus on the case at hand. It also seems to leave audience members frustrated when issues they want to discuss appear to be unwelcome. Their input is important, but this is not the appropriate venue to receive it. Public comment is best suited for general meetings when all committee members are present and robust discussions of ideas or concerns about police services and accountability can be welcomed. The full committee is better positioned to take in and respond to public comment and decide if it warrants further attention by a work group or referral to an elected official or city staff. From a management perspective, this proposal addresses some challenges and creates others. It streamlines and strengthens police accountability as required by the settlement agreement. It alleviates some of the workload from individual Citizen Review Committee members and reduces the length of appeals, which benefits all participants. It reserves time for the committee to focus solely on appellant's concerns in one venue and matters of general public concern in another. It also helps us predict, plan for, and control costs for security protection, which have increased in recent months. At the same time, this proposal shifts responsibilities and workload within the police bureau and my office, which has been adapting to rapid change and growth in recent years. It increases the number of night meetings city staff members must prepare for and attend each month, which for my staff at least, shifts responsibilities and workload associated with their young children to their spouses. We will need to monitor these changes and make adjustments as needed once we have some experience with this new process. That said, these changes reflect what I believe is the best approach to achieve many positive results, given the constraints of time, resources, and political will. And now I'm going to turn it over to Director Sevier to walk you through the code provisions that we're proposing to amend.
Good afternoon, council members. Mr. Mayor, my name is Constantine Sevier, Director of the Independent Police Review. So I'm going to walk you through the changes in chapter 321 and 32140. So just a bit of kind of a, let's say, 50,000-foot view of why we're moving forward with these particular code changes right now. Over the last year or so, IPR, other folks within the city have met with community members, have discussed the needed changes internally. I've had two public forums, one on August 1st and the other on August 23rd. And in trying to summarize some of the statements that I've heard from community members and trying to incorporate that in the code changes, there are about four or five different values that I heard and kind of impacted me. The first is that community complaints are important and they are a direct feedback mechanism to getting accountability. As we all know, IPR has a relatively high dismissal rate. And part of the dismissal rate is based on the standard that was set for IPR when city code was created around IPR in 2001. And that was a code based on looking at misconducts. What we're trying to move our accountability system to is a true accountability system. That's going to be reflected in some of the stuff that I talk about a little bit later, about having a two-tiered track for allegations of officer misconduct, of having cases that are best situated with an officer supervisor being done as supervisory investigation. And more serious cases, like use of force, bias-based policing, significant inappropriate or abuse of authority by officers being subject to full administrative investigations. The other value is that the accountability system has to be fair and reflective of the values of the community. And the CRC members and the committee as itself, I think, is a testament of our community's values and how proud we can be of how much the CRC has provided the city. The members put in an inordinate amount of time to prepare for each case. The case files have gotten bigger over the years that I've worked in the city. I've worked in the city eight years. And there's a recent case where the CRC members had to review several hundred pages of an investigation, hours of video testimony before they could come in at 5:30 in the evening and spend about four or five hours on one case. So it's important that we cherish the CRC and then respect the work that they put in. The other part is that our accountability system must be able to withstand outside scrutiny, whether that is the Department of Justice, whether that is an arbitrator when an officer is subject to discipline and it goes through the grievance process. There is a lot about Portland where we do things a little bit differently. And our oversight system is that as well. There's a lot of experimentation that's incorporated within our oversight system. When you look at it nationally, it's a hybrid model. Includes some auditing function, includes some investigative and some monitoring functions. So in drafting the code changes and in working in the internal and mixed-community and city work groups, some of the things that were incorporated were some best practices developed by the National Association of Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement and the International Chiefs of Police. And also looking at comparable agencies. There are nowadays several cities around our size that have oversight mechanisms. So the city of Denver, the city of Austin, cities around, that have around 500,000 to 750,000 people. And Seattle as well. And taking a look of how they do it and see if there's approaches that they have that we can incorporate in our city. So how was this code change developed? Some community feedback. IPR should kind of articulate better what kind of cases it investigates. Feedback from the DOJ, the auditor mentioned some of it. All complaints investigated, lower dismissal rate. The investigative agency, whether that is IPR or Internal Affairs, provide a recommended finding. The Accountability Focus Group, which was a group composed of city staff and members of the community. There's a member from the Citizen Review Committee, a member of the Police Review Board, and a member from the Albina Ministerial Alliance, as well as a peer officer member. Some of the concepts that came up from the Accountability Focus Group were providing a mechanism for quality of service and rudeness complaints, which we've called supervisory investigations. And also providing greater flexibility in the appeal review process. And there were three different ideas that we discussed. The Accountability Group decided to forward those three as basically a package to council for its determination. One was having an administrative law judge hear appeals. That is something that the city of Denver does. And it's very efficient, it's very quick. It is also something that is open to the public in Denver and based on Colorado law. Having the CRC meet in panels, in three-person panels, for them to hear an appeal and review that. And the final option was a consolidated review board, which has been subject to a lot of discussion in the last six to eight weeks. There was a lot of things that recommended the consolidated review board as a way to go forward. It would combine, I believe, the best aspects of the Police Review Board with what the CRC does in the appeal context. The biggest negative to it, from what I've heard from the public, was the ability for members of the public to actually view what was going on, given the requirements of Oregon Public Records Law and the ability of members of the public to view disciplinary cases being adjudicated. So a little further step back. One of the things about our accountability system, it is a work in progress. Over the last 15 years, there have been four significant code changes. And that doesn't even include things that occurred in the 80s and 90s with the creation of PIAAC, which was the predecessor agency of IPR and that heard appeals of misconduct cases completed by Internal Affairs. But 2001, IPR and CRC were created. In 2010, there was a significant code change that created the Police Review Board. In 2010, there was a significant code change that created the Police Review Board, allowed IPR for the first time to self-initiate investigations, authorized IPR to monitor officer-involved shootings and custody deaths. So IPR's ability to go to the scene of an officer-involved shooting in custody death started with that particular legislation. It recommended that the Police Bureau implement a discipline guide, and it formalized in code IPR's ability to approve, review, and make a decision whether to approve all Police Bureau administrative investigations and findings. Following the 2010 code change, there was a stakeholder committee convened by council, which met for several months and provided the city with a significant amount of recommendations, several which have been implemented. There are still some items from the stakeholder committee that have not been implemented by the city for a variety of reasons, and I'll touch on some of that a little bit later. The next big change is the Department of Justice's settlement agreement, or the settlement agreement with the Department of Justice, which was approved by council in 2012. Following that, there was another code change in 2013, which implemented several provisions that, within the settlement agreement, that involved the Citizen Review Committee and the Police Review Board. The CRC was expanded to 11 members. The discipline guide was required. CRC members became rotating members of the Police Review Board and forced cases. In 2014, the settlement agreement was finally signed off on by Judge Simon and went into effect. The Police Bureau implemented a discipline guide, and in 2015, there were additional code changes, which modified CRC's case file review process and appeal procedures. So the Department of Justice settlement agreement that we're talking about is just Section 8, which is a relatively narrow part of the agreement, but obviously a very important one, and it covers the city. And within the city is the Police Bureau, IPR, and CRC, as well as the PRB. And one of the things that the settlement agreement talks about, and I think is kind of driven, whether you're part of the Department of Justice or people within the city, is to seek to retain and strengthen the citizen and civilian employee input mechanisms that existed prior to the agreement. So unlike in some settlement agreements or consent decrees, where the Department of Justice wants something completely brand-new, the Department of Justice and the city saw value in what existed prior to the existence of the settlement agreement. And what we've done over the last five or so years since the Department of Justice has entered Portland is try to build significant accountability mechanisms within our particular There are several provisions within Section 8 that are important, but the three critical ones, at least for what we're doing tonight and going forward on these code changes, are Paragraph 121, which is that all administrative investigations have to be completed within 180 days, and that CRC appeals should be completed within 21 days. And the 21 days is from receipt of a notice that an appellant wants to file appeal with IPR. Paragraph 123 is that the city must come together and develop an action plan when there are delays in complying with the conditions of the agreement. And Paragraph 128, IPR must have the ability to conduct meaningful independent investigations into officer misconduct. So prior to 2013, IPR in its then-12-year history had never completed an officer, I'm sorry, had never completed an officer misconduct investigation. So that was something that the Department of Justice noted, and the city, to its credit, has taken a number of steps to allow IPR to do independent investigations. This council has supported IPR in providing us with enough staff. We've gone from having two and a half investigators in 2013 to having budgeted seven investigators. For the 2015, 2016 budget year, we completed, or sorry, we initiated at least, and some of them are still ongoing, 17 administrative investigations. So again, the continuing theme that you'll hear from me is that it is a work in progress and that we are ultimately working towards a goal of making sure that community members and Portland Police Bureau officers feel confident that there's an administrative investigation process that includes both civilians and bureau members that is fair and expeditious. So some of the things that the code changes do not touch, and there are several, and some of them are issues that community members have brought up for a number of years that are pretty significant, particularly with IPR, one thing, or several things that I hear often is there are several members of the community who want IPR to be able to investigate officer-involved shootings and custody deaths. That is something that we are not allowed to do per the collective bargaining agreement that the city has with the Portland Police Association. Again, with the being able to compel officer testimony, so the way it works right now is that if IPR wants to interview an officer, which we do with some frequency nowadays, we have a liaison with Eternal Affairs, and Eternal Affairs works very well with us, and they are a significant help and never impeded any of our investigations. But several community members have brought up over the years that they feel that IPR should be able to directly compel an officer to testify, and that is something that would need to be bargained between the city and the PPA. Some other issues that have been brought up by community members that we are not touching in this particular code change is the CRC standard review. CRC's current standard review is the reasonable person standard. Several folks have brought up that they would prefer that if the CRC had a preponderance of the evidence standard, kind of the normal standard for a fact-finder. The CRC, as envisioned in City Code, works as an appeal body. And another issue that's involved with the standard review in particular is the city is obligated, under Department of Justice settlement agreement, to reduce redundancies and any significant sources of delay. When you look at the standard review and given what the Police Review Board does, which is an advisory body to the chief on disciplinary-type cases, changing the standard review from the current standard review to preponderance of the evidence would basically create two fact-finding bodies within one administrative investigation process. One of the attempts to try to deal with that, at least in our work in looking at our accountability system from when a community member files a complaint to an appeal, was the consolidated model, which would have, again, like I said earlier, provide a lot of the strings from both the PRB and the CRC. Increasing the size of the Citizen Review Committee, I've heard different numbers. I've heard 15, I've heard some other numbers. From a logistics standpoint of currently IPR staffs, all CRC meetings, and the ability to attract community members to serve on the CRC, we just ran through our most recent recruitment, and in the last five years, it was the least amount of community members who went through the process, who volunteered to want to serve on the Citizen Review Committee. And so being able to maintain a 15-member board, I would have significant doubts. I don't really have a real opinion about that, at least at this time, but that would be a significant logistics issue for the city to, moving forward, if we increase the size. Removing the conference hearing, which is when the CRC hears an appeal and votes to challenge a Police Bureau finding, and the chief receives that finding, or receives that challenge from the CRC, and the chief and the CRC do not agree. There is a conference hearing that is held for the chief and the CRC to be able to discuss their differences and see if there's some sort of resolution that is possible. That is something that does add time to our system, generally at least 30 days. Taking that out would mean that those appeals, once they went from the CRC, and particularly in the context of a challenge, they would go to council. They would be like the previous hearing, where council would make the ultimate decision.
I appreciate you going through the anticipated concerns that people might bring up. Given the late hour, it might be good to see what the public has to say and then have you explain why you did or didn't do what you did after that, if it's the way to do that.
So I've already discussed the consolidated review board, so in the interest of time, we'll not go further into that. So, next slide. So 321, 110, that is the intake section, and the purpose of that particular portion of the revised code is to provide alternate means for community members to file complaints about possible officer misconduct, and that the Police Bureau would provide complaint forms within police facilities, which happens now, more or less, but I think codifying it and making sure that it's actually implemented, I think, would improve the access that community members have to the city's services. The investigative tracks, basically, in a nutshell, that would create a formal administrative investigation process and a supervisory investigation process. One of the tensions in crafting an accountability system, particularly in the context of Portland, on a per capita basis, we, and you see this in other West Coast cities, there are more complaints here than, let's say, in Newark or a New York City per capita, and I am not exactly sure why that is, but a part of it is there's less hurdles for people to file complaints in the city of Portland. We take all complaints. That has been a value that we've tried to incorporate. So we take all complaints, and trying to make sure that we adequately address all the community members' issues has been a challenge over time. And having a supervisory investigation track in particular that would allow a supervisor to be able to directly contact a community member and the involved member and have a disposition attached, I believe, would be something that would, one, allow us to address relatively minor concerns in a faster way than formal administrative investigations. The supervisory investigations is similar to our current service improvement opportunity, which roughly takes 60 to 70 days, as opposed to a formal administrative investigation, where those generally take about 140 to 180 days. 321, 110 would require better notification. So when there's a situation where there's a concern about officer behavior that may be subject to criminal or administrative investigation, that the IPR director would be notified. So that would, and that requirement would fall upon the Assistant Chief Investigations, the Captain Professional Standards Division, and the Police Commissioner's staff. The ability of IPR to request that the Police Bureau open deadly force investigations in cases where a bureau member used force capable of causing death or serious physical injury, and that IPR receive from the bureau any force-related after-action reports where it's believed that members' actions were out of policy. And these provisions are really in the interest of time. There's a lot of really good interaction between IPR and the Police Bureau on these types of cases. But in the interest of making sure that the city is able to address possible misconduct by officers in the most timely manner, it's important that IPR receive notification in a, as quick of a manner as possible. Recommended findings. This would be a change from the current process where the officer's commander does recommended So it'd be the investigative agency, whether that's Eternal Affairs or IPR. We would be tasked with doing the recommended finding. And at IPR, the persons doing the findings would be one of the supervisors. At IPR, all of these supervisors are attorneys with either significant criminal law background or administrative law background. And the investigative agency doing the recommended findings, that's something that you see in a number of cities that are comparable to Portland, Seattle, Albuquerque, Atlanta. There's some other things that would need to happen to make this fully operational, but the first part of this is having it changed in code. In 321, the Citizen Review Committee appeals would allow the CRC to be able to meet in panels, to hear appeals. Right now, the quorum for the CRC to meet is five. The quorum would be reduced to three. And public comment would be reserved for non-appeal CRC meetings. 320, 140, it would allow the complainant to be able to present, to be present and have a statement at board sessions, which does not occur now. And that is the end of my presentation.
Okay. Questions? Okay. Thank you both very much. Let's take testimony, please.
Twenty-three people signed up. The first three, please come on our up. Dr. T. Allen Bethel, Dan Handelman, and Debbie Iona. And after them, I have Kimberly McCullough, Mark Kramer, and Khalil Edwards. Khalil Edwards, sorry. Thank you. Shannon Kogan would be in the next group.
Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening. Dr. T. Allen Bethel, President of Albino Ministerial Alliance, serving as co-chair Albino Ministerial Alliance Coalition for Justice and Police Reform. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today and share some comments around the proposed changes for the CRC and IPR process, as slated and asked us to do by the, who are we talking about? The DOJ, of all people. I know my time is ticking, and I will stay with it as soon as I find the last piece of what I'm supposed to be doing.
Would it be helpful if somebody else spoke while you find it?
Yes. Dan, are you ready?
Yeah, sure.
All right, let's do that. Dr. Bethel, we'll have Mr. Handelman go ahead, and then we'll return to you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Mayor. My name is Dan Handelman. I'm with Portland Cop Watch. And Portland Cop Watch applauds the city's decision to keep police misconduct appeal hearings public, but the current proposal has too many flaws to let it move forward. We strenuously object to the proposal to silence community input during hearings. CRC is not only capable of separating facts from opinions, but the existing ordinance directs them to hear any evidence offered, saying they must consider evidence only from the investigation when deciding on the findings. The city attorney admitted that the police association has never filed a grievance based on public comments at a CRC hearing. The community has the same case summary paperwork as the appellant and the officer. Does the city plan to prohibit those parties from speaking at the appeals, too? The way the ordinance is written, CRC would have to call a special meeting to take public input and might be prohibited from taking input at their regular meetings. Public comment helps CRC on community context, policy, training, and their own protocols. The last case at CRC benefited from comments. After it was pointed out they were using an old directive, they changed their recommendation on a taser use, using the correct directive. Silencing the community will only lead to more disruptions rather than less. Meanwhile, breaking the 11-member panel into three-person panels will create a number of problems. In terms of diversity, with the current committee of seven women and four men, four persons of color, it's likely some panels will be all female and white. Cop Watch suggests expanding CRC to 15 members and tapping into the 20-member Police Review Board civilian pool to round out seven-member panels, specifically with four CRC members and three PRB members with a quorum of five. If one of the three CRC members becomes ill, the appeal will have to be delayed, leading to appeals taking much longer than the proposed 21 days. If CRC sends a case back for more investigation, the same three members will have to be available for the supplemental hearing, or else others have to read the case file and listen to a recording from the first hearing. In the last two years, CRC has met 16 times to consider just eight appeals, in part because three cases were poorly investigated and two led to conference hearings. And the conference hearing provision to allow the chief to come back to CRC if he or she disagrees with their finding...
I'm going to grant each of these panelists some additional time, because each of their organizations has put a lot of time into these issues, so go ahead, Dan.
I appreciate it, Mayor Hills. The conference hearing causes more unnecessary delays, and it should be removed, and disputed cases should go back to city council. And we have other members of Cop Watch who can round out my testimony. But I just want to say, this point that was made about the Police Review Board and the CRC being duplicative, in our records of the last 20 appeals that were heard since that code change was implemented, we could only find two where the case was heard both at the Police Review Board and the CRC. So it's very rare that happens, and you can take steps, we can discuss later, about how to make it so that a case wouldn't end up going to both places. how to make it so that a case wouldn't end up going to both places.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. Bethel, you ready to proceed?
Thank you, yes. The Albino Minister Alliance Coalition for Justice and Police Reform requests that the city council modify the proposed changes to the IPR CRC and the Police Review Board, or delay voting until amendments or other changes can be made. The settlement agreement with the Department of Justice speaks to the need of correcting the Byzantine accountability system currently in place. Let's not rush, but seek to install a truly more simpler accountability and review process. The coalition has some serious concerns about eliminating the community's voice at the Citizen Review Committee appeal hearings. To eliminate the community voice, we believe flies in the face of community engagement and involvement, a goal we are all working towards and for greater transparency, rebuilding trust, and community engagement. The community voice should be welcomed and valued in the process. The coalition also has concerns about three-member panels for the CRC. Even though the full CRC is chosen carefully to represent some of the diversity our city has to offer, only using three of 11 members creates the likelihood that the smaller panel will not offer that diversity inclusive of age, race, gender, and lived experience. The AMC also is concerned that the proposal to change the oversight system is going forward while the Community Oversight Advisory Board is in recess. The settlement agreement authorizes that board to seek ways to improve community input and weigh in on accountability matters. COAB was working on its own proposal for the IPR CRC system when they were placed on hiatus. We request that their input be reviewed and adopted and their changes were applicable. The coalition has had a long history of offering input to city council on changes we want to see to the system, including giving IPR the ability to compel officer testimony. These recommendations date back to our earliest incarnation after the death of Kendra James in 2003. We offered similar recommendations as a member of the 2010 Oversight Stakeholder Committee convened by the city, and our community demands issued after the death of Erin Campbell, and in our proposals to improve the DOJ settlement agreement. In this post-Ferguson America, it would be a mistake to take steps backwards on allowing community to be a part of community oversight and to reduce the diversity of the people examining alleged police misconduct. We hope you will modify or delay this proposal until it has been fully vetted and meets community expectations, moving us closer to the goal of justice, accountability, transparency, and community engagement. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Debbie Iona, representing the League of Women Voters of Portland. The League has a longstanding interest in the city's police oversight system, and we believe transparency and public participation are of utmost importance. We are very concerned about both the process used to develop the current proposal and some of its provisions. We urge you to appoint a task force charged with taking a more thoughtful and inclusive look at the complaint process and CRC's role in it. Council is being presented with a proposal without the analysis needed to truly understand the many factors that contribute to lengthy appeals. CRC's right to request additional investigation and the time it takes to schedule a conference hearing between the chief and the CRC to discuss disagreements over findings are just two examples of why the 21-day timeline is unrealistic. The League is troubled by the proposed elimination of public comment at appeal hearings. As regular CRC meeting attendees, we have observed that in the vast majority of cases, public comment has been constructive and respectful. The city attorney cited a fear that the involved officer might file a grievance if the public continues to comment. This has never happened in CRC's 15-year history. 20 minutes of public comment does not contribute to delays. Therefore, we see no reason to cut the community out of the process. Furthermore, Daryl Turner recently stated that the union has no problem with public input as long as it is delivered respectfully. The community deserves a thorough explanation of what is motivating the proposed changes and why they focus on excluding the public when public participation is not delaying the process. There are some positive features in the proposal, such as reducing the number of dismissed complaints, giving the agency conducting the complaint investigation the authority to draft findings, and allowing the complainant to attend the Police Review Board hearing. A task force could explore options for supporting the complainant in light of the potential intimidating nature of a hearing room dominated by police bureau officials. Again, we urge you to step back and create a process where these issues can be thoughtfully discussed. And then finally, I just wondered, since I think the number of people have had to leave because, you know, it's kind of late, if you would consider continuing the hearing so they can have an opportunity to testify. Thank you.
Yeah, good suggestion. Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, let's take the next three folks, please.
Our Kimberly McCullough, Mark Kramer, and Shannon Kogan. And they'll be followed by TJ Brown, Philip Coca, and Dr. W.G. Barnett.
Welcome. Good evening.
Mayor Hales and members of the commission, my name is Kimberly McCullough. I'm the Legislative Director at ACLU of Oregon. Although the proposed ordinance covers a number of things, we're just here to comment on two specific concerns that we have. The first you've already heard about, which is the proposal that public comment be taken out of case file reviews and appeal hearings. As we all know, the purpose of the CRC is to build public trust and to provide a window for the public to problem-solve issues of police accountability, and a very important aspect of that is the identification of policies that need to change. So, that public comment opportunity at the time that these specific issues are being discussed is a very good opportunity for that. It helps that process, and we think that taking that away would really contravene that purpose. You know, if the suggestion is that the public doesn't have enough information to comment, then, and I'm not saying that that's the case, but if that's the suggestion, then the public should be given more information, not taken away the opportunity to comment. If the concern is that people make irrelevant comments, well, the same thing could be said for city council hearings. And we all know that despite the fact that it may be inconvenient to sometimes listen to irrelevant comments, it does play a very important role in our democracy. And then if the suggestion is that it may inappropriately influence the CRC members, I think they can simply be given proper instructions.
Ms. McCullough?
Yes.
The difference is, we're paid to listen to irrelevant comments. The city members are not.
That is, that may be true. That may be true, but that certainly doesn't mean that it's not an important public forum where this information needs to be heard.
Fair enough. Now, let her continue, please.
The second concern that we have is about the reduction of the CRC to panels of three. ACLU of Oregon participated in 2010 in the Police Oversight Stakeholder Committee, which recommended increasing the size of the CRC from nine to 11 members, and that change was recommended to increase the diversity of the CRC. And we're just concerned that reducing to three members would really potentially damage the diversity of those individual panels. We are not opposed to the idea of panels, but three-member panels just seem far too small. So, those are our comments, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mayor Hales, Commissioner Fritz, Commissioner Novak, I represent the National Lawyers Guild. We've been around the block on this issue. Personally, I've been part of the Mayor Katz Task Force in 2000 and the 2010 Police Officer, Police Stakeholder Committee. We do support the League's proposal for a stakeholder group or a task force to examine this issue more broadly. We are concerned with the lack of transparency, particularly the lack of informed input by COAB into this proposal. So, this is a time of opportunity, and I urge you not to rush. We oppose the proposal in its current form. In particular, we oppose the elimination of public comment at the CRC meetings. We are frustrated by the failure of the proposal to incorporate what we have been asking for for a number of years, both in front of Mayor Katz and in 2010. So, I just want to list those to you briefly, because this should be part of the agenda of where we should go from here, which is a stakeholder process. The issue about the IPR having the power to compel officer independently, which is what they don't have now, the definition of evidence, whether we're going to use preponderance of the evidence or the reasonable person standard, the ability, and this is very important, for IPR to conduct review of deadly force allegations, independent investigations of deadly force, and deaths in custody, and that the system applies to all complaints. So, this should be part of this process. We are concerned that if we use this limited window of opportunity to pass this proposal, we will foreclose meaningful reform, because as we know, these things are not considered every month or every year. We're also concerned with the notice today of the collective bargaining agreement, and we are very concerned, because we've heard this over and over again in 2000, 2010, we can't do this because of the CBA. So, we are urging you as well to forestall approval of the CPA until these issues can be examined at length. And so, necessary changes, for example, in compelling officer testimony, in allowing IPR to do deaths in custody investigations, are incorporated into the new CBA. Thank you. And I have five pages of testimony. I would just ask you at your convenience to review that in detail.
Please, make sure we've got that, and we'll make sure it's distributed. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening all. My name is Shannon Kogan, and I am here as a representative of Sisters of the Road. Sisters participated in the Stakeholder Work Group of 2010 to identify recommendations for increasing police accountability and gaining community trust. We come here today to reiterate our previous demands to restore public faith and to take the time to do that. Sisters community is often harassed by the police for doing nothing more than existing as human beings in public spaces. Our community's rational fear and distrust of the very agency tasked with maintaining the human rights of all will not be lessened by removing public comment from disciplinary appeals or reducing the weight of citizen input in the oversight process. The mission of the Portland Police Bureau includes promoting individual responsibility. Individual officers are not exempt from the need to take responsibility for their actions. Public comment in meetings encourages each officer to be accountable and held to an outside scrutiny for their actions when interacting with the community they exist to serve. Reducing transparency does not fall within the community's demand, nor does it fall within the Justice Department's demands. Portland belongs to all of us and not just the businesses or the police union. All of us live here and deserve the right to be able to walk down the street in our communities and not be afraid of law enforcement, and we need to be assured that when we have a concern, that concern will be addressed in a meaningful, transparent way. That means that stakeholders who exist outside the relatively powerful structure of the police bureau are well-represented in oversight meetings, and the smaller panels reduce the chance of that happening. Those most at risk need to have a strong presence when we are deciding how to hold our police accountable. That is equity. The recommendations which have come out of stakeholder meetings are a step in the right direction. Quickening the dreadfully long oversight process is a priority, but speeding up the process at the expense of community buy-in is not the goal of the Oversight Board either. We at Sisters ask, why take a step backwards now? The makeup of the Oversight Board should be weighted towards citizen involvement, and disciplinary appeals need to be open for public comment. Sewing down the process in the short term would help us best achieve our long-term goals. So, let's take the time now.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Okay, let's take the next--
The three are TJ Browning, Philip Caca, Mr. W.G. Barnett. And they will be followed by Barbara Ross, Chris O'Connor, and Julie Ramos.
Ms. Browning, why don't you go ahead while they're getting settled?
Thank you. Hello again. Same discussion, same topic. The four issues I need to talk about, the banning of public comments. I want you to recognize that there's no opposition, not from the police union, and Commissioner Novak, not even from the CRC members who are not paid to sit there and listen to it. They don't oppose the public comment either, but thank you for your comment. The minor complaints going to supervisory, that is, just really resonates with me as a disconnect from the bureau and the citizens they serve. If any of you watched a person, a citizen, go through the process, file a complaint, and go to a hearing because of, this was the example the auditor used on the radio the other day, rude conduct, that might seem minor to the police bureau, and I understand their perspective, but that's part of the disconnect with the citizens they serve. When the citizens want, as does the police force, professional behavior, that flies in the face of the desires from both parties. I believe that if you take it out of the hearing from the citizens, and the citizens recognize that their complaints are going to go to the police bureau and not to a citizen body, those complaints are going to diminish. Not the action, the complaints. And that's going to hurt not just the citizens, but the police bureau. The reasonable person versus the preponderance of evidence lowers the standards for a police officer. The police officer coming into that hearing is no longer viewed as a professional. We're not asking, is this something that a professional would do with training and experience? We're saying, is this behavior that any reasonable person would do? That's not the same thing. That's not fair to the police officer, nor is it fair to the citizen alleging the complaint. But the worst part of that, and I'm speaking from personal experience here, when you are sitting on the CRC and you are listening to the pain and concerns of the citizens, and you cannot vote your conscience, you can't even vote what you believe is the correct thing to do, because your hands are tied by the reasonable person standard, people resign. I would like to see, in conclusion, it expanded to a 15-person panel and panels of five, so we can have diverse people hearing these complaints. I also think you won't have CRC members resigning if they actually get to volunteer and give up that precious time with children and family to actually do something they believe in, and the ability to do something they believe in, and it will serve our officers better. The auditor and Constantine made a comment that this system must stand up to outside scrutiny. No, 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 they are so wrong. This process must have the confidence of the public. Otherwise, it's not going to work. It's a big step backwards. Please, take your time. Stop this now, and please be mindful of the input we're giving.
Thank you very much. Welcome.
My name is Philip Toczka, from Portland Cop Watch. Regarding fairness of the proposal, the officers in the process get representation from the union rep or attorney for free. Complaintants at the Portland Police Review Board have no knowledgeable advocates available. Appellants have process advisors who cannot advocate. We do appreciate that the complainants may now address the PRB, but they will be virtually alone in the room and mostly filled with police to explain how they think a police officer mistreated them. The appeals process advisor can look at the entire case file, but they can't share the contents with the appellants. Volunteers or paid attorneys are not allowed to look at the case file. Another issue of eight times officers have appeared on the CRC meetings, there was one time the committee proposed a sustained finding. Arguably, officer input may unduly sway CRC. If all non-disciplinary complaints are routed to the precinct supervisors, unless IPR has to sign off on the outcomes, it will lead to less consistency in how complaints are resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, and welcome.
My name is Mr. Barnett. I live in northeast Portland, and I'm with Cop Watch. The comments I make will, many of them compare the August 1st proposal with the current one that was just being reviewed this evening. The August 1 proposal would have allowed CRC to recommend findings based on a preponderance of evidence rather than a deferential reasonable person standard. The current proposal keeps that old standard. The August 1st proposal contemplated CRC hearing appeals on deadly force cases, also since removed. The August 1st proposal indicated there would be a majority of civilians on the Police Review Board. This proposal keeps a three-to-two or four-to-three majority of police personnel, depending on the type of case heard. Looking at the 2010 Oversight Stakeholders Report, there were 41 recommendations made. Only nine have been implemented, seven others partially implemented, and 25 not done at all. In 2010, when making changes to the oversight system, the city convened public work groups to hash out the details. This process has been flawed, in large part because no such dialogue has happened. Among other unresolved issues are giving IPR power to compel officer testimony and investigate deadly force, giving the auditor the ability to consult attorneys who are not also advising the Portland police, giving the CRC power to compel officer testimony, and letting council hear new evidence. There are other things, and I hear the bell is whistled, but one of the things that hasn't been stined is, you have a citizens' review committee, they don't have-- been stined is you have a citizens' review committee, they don't have access to an independent lawyer, nor do they have staff. So we urge the council to delay the vote. We'd be astonished if Judge Simon or the DOG did not find the city out of compliance because they're not having, because the CRC is unable to meet their unrealistic timeline of holding appeals. At the very least, increase the CRC and the panels and reinstate public testimony and provide better support to the CRC.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, let's hear some more votes, please.
Next three are Barbara Ross, Chris O'Connor, and Julie Ramos. And they'll be followed by Christine Malone, Jim Young, and Kyasha Ford.
Welcome.
I'm Barbara Ross, and I'm also from the League Women Voters, and I just want to emphasize the League's support for a couple of constructive suggestions that we think would improve the process. We fully support the idea of having a task force to look at things more carefully and to consider some of the things that just haven't been resolved by this set of revisions. We would like to see the membership of the CRC increased to 15 so that you could have five-member panels so that if one member wasn't there, you could go ahead with the hearings, and also it would increase the possibility for diversity. If you have three, if you just have three, then you could have two people with really similar points of view that would overshadow and not really be a balanced approach to the problem. The other suggestion for speeding up the process would be eliminating the conference meeting with the chief if the CRC disagrees with the Bureau's findings, the Bureau's conclusions. And I think that that's just an unnecessary step that is going to make it impossible to meet this 21-day. So in conclusion, I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. There has been some progress made, there's some good things in it, but again, the reasonable person standard of review hasn't been resolved. And so I just think that there are still issues that need to be addressed thoughtfully before you take this action. And I appreciate the hard work you've put into it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Chris O'Connor. I'm speaking as an individual. I'm an attorney who works for the Public Defender's Office. I'm not here representing any particular client or my law firm. I'm here to express my opposition to the removal of the public comment portion of key phases of the oversight process. I have to admit that I'm more cynical than some of the earlier articulate commentators about the whole oversight process. To me, it's sort of arguing about the paint job on a car with no engine. You know, someone at red, someone at blue, but the thing doesn't run. As someone who's for over a decade been appointed to represent dozens of city residents and citizens each month, all involved in encounters with law enforcement at some part of their legal process, I believe the current oversight process is ultimately rather meaningless in many cases, majority of complainants. While I can't speak for each member of the defense bar, I know the overwhelming majority of the defense attorneys would never advise a client to bother making a complaint unless it was useful for some civil suit later. As needing to use up some process, a complaint would be practically meaningless, actually, except for the abstract benefit of having your complaint heard in public. If there is going to be an inevitable outcome in favor of the officer that's questioned or accused of misconduct, the public input is, in fact, the only important part, given the inevitable outcome in which the officer will be exonerated. I'm also concerned about the auditor's rush for efficiency to meet the DOJ timeline. If you want efficiency, just skip to the end. It would only take a couple hours for them to say the officer's exonerated, the complaint's been satisfied, and a letter telling them that knocking off has been done. So this whole process, I'm concerned, is just a rush avoiding the real issues that other people have so much better articulated in terms of actual meaningful oversight, including compelled testimony and oversight onto larger issues of use of force and death in custody.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Kyasha Ford. I'm actually going to read the statements from other fellow CRC member and Vice Chair Julie Ramos, if that's okay. Council members, please consider if this solution really gets at the main issue. What is the main issue? And has there truly been an analysis of the problems in the system? Do we really know what causes delays? Is this a stopgap measure that will be retrieved in another few months? If so, let's wait, slow down, and get all the players together and come up with a competent, thorough plan. This new proposal does not streamline the process at all, nor reduce time. While I agree with the idea of panels, but three is too small a number. Either add in some PRB community members or increase the size of the CRC and have five-member panels. I believe public comment is critical and necessary. CRC is a civilian body, and part of our responsibility is to hear the public. This is non-negotiable. One change from the original proposal that should be implemented is changing standards of review from reasonable decision to preponderance, to preponderance of the evidence. Lastly, this is a very complex issue. More time and broader group perspective would create a better, I'm sorry, a better amount of, a better overall system change. Vice Chair Julie Ramos.
Thank you very much. Okay?
The next three are Kristin Malone, Jim Young, and Kyasha Ford.
Okay. Go ahead, please. Kristin, you want to go first? Go ahead.
Yes. My name is Kristin Malone. I'm the current chair of the CRC. Earlier this evening, we had up to seven CRC members here to express their comments. I have the written comments of a couple more, and I hope that I can have a bit of extra time to add those to my testimony.
Or submit them too, because I think we're going to be continuing this hearing, so.
Excellent. There are two changes to the CRC's process that are contained in the proposed changes presented to you tonight. The first is changing the CRC's quorum for appeals from five to three. The goal of this change is to increase the number of appeals we can hear per month. And to the extent that the CRC's frequency is actually the cause of the delay in the appeal process, and I think you've heard some testimony to the effect that it might not actually be the linchpin here, I do support the change. In theory, this could permit up to three three-person hearings per month. But to better ensure that we have a quorum at those meetings, I would recommend increasing the CRC size, as you've heard also. Although a three-member quorum would be helpful, I would hope still in those meetings to be able to get larger groups to increase diversity. The second proposed change is the one I implore council to reject. This change eliminates public comment from hearings where appeals are heard. As things stand now, we hear public comment twice, first before we vote, and then again after the appeal has concluded and before everybody leaves. I believe both periods of comment are valuable, but at a minimum, the public must be afforded some chance to hear it at these meetings. As an example of valuable comments we hear during the appeal, citizens identify the failure of participants on the CRC to address relevant portions or issues in directives we review, and they respond to facts already discussed by meeting participants, and they can provide input on non-substantive procedural questions that we face. For example, we received public comment when the Bureau did not send members to an appeal as to whether we should proceed without them or wait and reschedule to another date. As for after the appeal concludes, it's important for the community and the CRC to discuss substantive and procedural issues raised in the appeal. Failing to permit this will limit the amount of feedback the CRC receives, which is part of our mission. It will damage the relationship of trust between the CRC and the community, and it will make CRC meetings more unruly, not less. If the auditor is concerned about the amount of time CRC members need to put in, having to have two meetings to hear issues raised in one appeal is overburdensome. While there are many changes that can and should be examined to improve our process, and I hope and trust that the city will examine and pursue these, I urge the committee to reject the elimination of public comment.
Yeah, and if you could submit those other items too to Carlo, make sure everybody gets to see them. So, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. James Young. I've been a member of the CRC or attending its meetings for almost six years. Like the chair, I do support the auditor's proposal only as an initial interim step pending consideration of the issues that other speakers have raised, and which I hope to have time to briefly address, or I will by written comment, except for the elimination of public comment. I will be suggesting an alternative that can help accomplish the goals proposed by the auditor, as well as preserving meaningful public comment. Aside from hearing appeals faster, it appears that the other goals of the auditor can be reduced to saying that they're seeking a professional, fair and biased hearing for both the appellant and the police officer, free from political or public pressure so that the decision is made solely in applying the facts to the applicable standard, and I hope we talk about eventually changing that standard. One of the things that have not been mentioned is that the police officers involved ignore the CRC. During my almost six years of either being actively participating or observing as a citizen, I've seen a police officer present once. This is disrespectful. They are public servants. The city is their employer and the public, but there has to be a process so that it is fair to everyone. At a meeting in City Hall a few years ago with one of our work groups, Daryl Turner was present. He was specifically asked, why don't police officers attend? His response, because of the verbal abuse or degrading comments that are made. The suggestions that I will have at the end will help address those. The presence of officers, I suggest, are important. Number one, out of respect for the appellant and the entire process, they are public servants. Number two, what they don't get to see is regardless of their intent on the street, how an appellant might perceive their actions from the appellant's background, and it can be a learning experience where everybody wins. The suggested approach that I have is that public comment can be allowed by majority vote of the appellate panel after the appeals decision is made. This would allow, assuming that the hearing is conducted in an orderly manner, and that some hearings can last four, five hours, and if it's 10 o'clock and people are tired, to be honest, public comment is not going to be digested well anyway. But the point is, it can be allowed immediately after the hearing, while it's fresh in everyone's mind, and not delayed to another hearing or a special meeting, rather, of the CRC. And I'm happy to, I've even got some specific language as a former DA and city attorney that I'm happy to share with the city attorney's staff. But please understand, this can only be an interim first step. The standard of review is simply not functional. Second, what I like to call the jurisdiction of the CRC, officer-involved shootings, in custody deaths, the very issues that are most important to the community, there is no meaningful civilian police oversight. So please look at this in the auditor's suggestion as an initial first step to look at the broader picture.
Thank you very much.
All right? Thank you.
And good evening again. Kyasha Ford, the CRC member. So contrary to my fellow members, I am in opposition to, number one, the public comment aspect being removed in the proposal. It is very concerning that a citizens' review oversight body would reduce public comment or eliminate it. We are, the public is who we are serving. We are serving a group of people that are saying they feel that they might be oppressed by police officers or they're having confrontations, and this is their only opportunity to be heard. So to allow IA to provide a detailed, in-depth investigation, to even have a captain explain an officer's rationale, who has not shown up his or herself to explain that rationale, but then to deny someone who is passionate about what is going on, to not speak on something they might have personally observed or encountered, is a disservice, not only to ourselves but to the city. And yes, we are volunteering, but we volunteer with that time and understanding that we are taking it very seriously. And as a result of that seriousness, we would like to hear all sides. With regards to the three-member panels, as a member of the CRC who believes in the importance of diversity and diverse ideas and different backgrounds, it would be very concerning to reduce 11-member body down to three-member panels. I do think that some members have more vocal opinions and are more direct and could influence someone else. There could be a two-to-one vote all the time, and that would be concerning. I might not be on that panel. Ms. Ramos might not be on the panel. Mr. Rivera might not be on the panel. And I would be very concerned about the lack of diversity in that scenario. In addition to the concerns that the auditor has addressed with time constraints and the delays and missing the 21-day mark, we have to really evaluate exactly what are those constraints? And I haven't heard enough discussion about it, so that raises concerns. In addition to being a member of the CRC and discussing proposed changes, impacting directly the CRC without input from the CRC is an additional concern of mine, because we are the ones doing the work, we are the ones volunteering the time. Mr. Young is the one who had water thrown on him. He did not retreat and stop attending meetings. He continued to come because he believes in the work we are doing. So we are asking that you take the same seriousness that we take with our job and review this proposal with more input and do not rush to a decision. Lastly, I do not want the CRC to ever become a stamp of approval body and with our current standard of review. Sometimes I feel that is the juxtaposition that we are in. I don't always follow exactly the current standard of review, because sometimes it is very unreasonable, the actions of some of our members that are city servants serving the public. Some of those actions are quite unreasonable, and I cannot with good conscience vote in favor of a captain's decision when it is clear that there has been inappropriate behavior. And I feel we are always pushed against that envelope and that rock between a hard place every time we have a hearing and we are reviewing the reasonable person standard. So I highly suggest they consider adding back to the proposal the preponderance of the evidence. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay. Let's take the next votes, please.
Michael Luna left, is that correct? Then we'll go with Julie Frank, Marilyn Drikus, and David Davis.
Okay. Mr. Davis is here. The others, any of the others still here?
I have a statement for Michael.
What's that?
I have Michael Luna's statement.
Sure, sure. Come put that in the record in the moment. Mr. Davis is getting settled.
Mr. Luna, who's also a CRC member, wrote, "One of our roles as a CRC member is to be a representative of the community. If we are not allowed to hear public comment during our hearings, then I believe we would be failing in this role. The public that is attending the hearing have an opportunity to hear information from the case, and presently they can comment or ask questions regarding this information presented. These comments could bring a factual and logical perspective and therefore be valuable in the overall decision-making."
Great. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Davis, you're on.
So one thing I wanted to say, Steve Novick over there is pointing out all this stuff about volunteers. Well, the truth is, is volunteers usually work harder than people that are paid and overpaid like you, so you should respect volunteer work instead of trying to degrade it, okay? And this whole process of making these meetings secretive is totally criminal, you know? You're trying to exclude the community, you know? There's people getting beaten, mistreated, all kinds of stuff on the streets all the time by police officers, and, you know, just like these members of the CRC said that they already have to dismiss cases where they'd like to take them, you know? And, you know, these secretive meetings is not the way to conduct business. And this discipline system is already secretive and behind closed doors. This is just an attempt to push it further behind closed doors, you know? And the IPR is understaffed, they have limited power. Maybe you need to increase the staff, maybe double it in size, and actually increase their power. And, you know, a recently published article in the Willamette Week reported that a former police officer, Portland Police Officer Cody Burne, who fatally shot Keaton Otis, is now a prosecutor. The Multnomah County District Attorney stand by their hiring decision to hire a murderous cop who executed a mentally ill man via police firing squad. Okay? So that just shows that the level of corruption in this county goes even further to the prosecutors and everything else. And this whole, the whole idea of police accountability is a joke anyways, and it's nonexistent in this country and in this city, and that's obviously proof right there that you have the DA officer office hiring a murderous cop who shot a mentally ill- there, that you have the DA office hiring a murderous cop who shot a mentally ill guy unarmed, shot him 11, he fired 11 of the 32 shots, okay?
Thank you.
And James Chassie was beaten to death approximately 10 years ago by the Portland Police, and that's one of the reasons that a lot of these police reform things have taken part in the DOJ settlement, and there's going to be a night of rage outside of the Justice Center, 8:00 p.m., September 17th, Saturday, and we'll be marching in the streets to do something about this, you know?
Thank you very much.
And, you know...
Let's let the next person speak, okay?
No, actually, you delayed my time for two hours so I get to speak.
We have some other folks that would like to speak, Mr. Davis.
Sorry. You know? And what about my broken camera, you know? Did your little buddy smack?
Okay, Mr. Davis, thank you very much. Let's let this next person speak, okay? Mr. Davis, you're done.
Rod Underhill, the same guy who hired this...
Mr. Davis, you're done. It's late, and we have people that want to speak.
Took place in a police firing squad.
Are we going to have to recess in order to let somebody else speak? All right, let's let somebody else speak.
You know what? That's your little power play.
No, it's just trying to...
You just don't want to hear what I say because I speak the truth too much.
Thank you.
And that's the, oh, we're going to have to have a recess. You're such a petty little tyrant, and I'll be at your house. I have your address, you know?
Mr. Davis, please.
And we'll be stating that on public record a bunch of times in the near future so other citizens can go and ask their angry concerns outside of your house.
Okay, thank you. Let's let this person speak. Go ahead, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Marilyn Drikus. I'm a private citizen. To my knowledge, the Portland Police Department has been under federal oversight to reform some of its practices to better serve our community in a just manner, one that engenders mutual respect and trust between the police and the community. An independent citizen review committee is an integral part of this equation. Otherwise, law enforcement is policing itself. That is not an open democratic approach to serving a community. We need each other. It benefits both the police and the community to work together in an open democratic manner of checks and balances. An expanded police review board operating behind closed doors and no independent citizen review committee with public hearings does not meet this criterion and does not engender mutual trust. So I ask you to please consider all the comments that have been made here this evening in light of that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, others?
I have Peter Parks, Mike Bluehair, and Jason Renaud.
Come on up.
And the last person I showed signed up is Eric Terrell.
Okay.
Go ahead. Oh, goodness. Hi there, Mayor Harells, Amanda, Steve.
Let's put your name in the record before you start...
Oh, Mike Bluehair, I'm here speaking on behalf of Film the Police Portland. Public comment, free speech, that's the hallmark of a free and open society. You can't have a free society without freedom of expression, okay? Maybe people say things you don't like, but that's the point of the U.S. Constitution. Okay, the Oregon Constitution actually has more broadly defined freedom of expression and protections for the individual than the U.S. Constitution. So these are things you shouldn't be treading upon. I mean, seriously, the point of the U.S. Constitution really is to protect unpopular offensive speech, because one day, what the government might find offensive is merely people trying to protect themselves, merely people trying to defend their individual rights to express themselves against government, and that's the point. So I just implore you to think about what hallmarks of a free and open society is, and one of them is public comment, public discourse. Also, the fact that this was delayed so long, and the CRC people didn't even get a chance to speak, is an insult to them. They work really hard, okay? I don't like where they're going. I believe that city government, the police union, Portland Police Bureau, is pressuring them into feeling disheartened, and we shouldn't do that. We have a very unique process for police accountability. We need to cherish it, we need to foster it, and we need to make their jobs easier, and you can do that by giving them more people.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Others?
Anybody sign up who did not hear the name get called?
Anyone else that didn't sign up, come on up, get the last word, at least for tonight.
You guys need to fire aisle nine.
Come on, no, no, let this guy speak now, please. Come on, Mr. West.
My name is Robert West. I'm with Film the Police 911, and I came to speak about freedom of speech. Part of our government is people being able to speak and understand what's going on, and freedom of expression, something that the city doesn't really appreciate or tolerate, but that's the way it is. But what's bothered me is that you guys saved this for so long and so late that a lot of people had to leave. That just boggles my mind, because you guys basically censored a whole bunch of people, whole bunch of people discussing what's going on. I don't know if it's the bank accounts, I don't know if it's, you know, corporate money going to you guys or what, but somehow something got really messed up, because, you know, two hours, two and a half hours late on an agenda item is ridiculous. It is thoughtless to the people, it is thoughtless to the CRC Board, and should not be tolerated.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay.
Time certain, is this supposed to be time certain, two hours delay?
Folks, I want to get the chance of the auditor to come back up and answer some questions. Mr. Davis, you're done. I want to let the auditor come back up, okay?
Members of your own board here, they got bored.
You'll have to ask them. Could you all please let the auditor come back up, please?
They'll lay their whole dinner time, too.
Folks, could we let the auditor come back up? Thank you.
You're buying pizzas for people if you're going to make this long, you know?
So we have had a hearing that, as people have noted, got delayed quite a bit, because a lot of things got put on the calendar today, so one of the things I want to suggest is that we continue this hearing, but for a number of reasons. One, I've heard some things in the testimony here that I find very persuasive, particularly CRC members themselves saying that they believe we should maintain the opportunity for public comment. We've obviously heard a lot of agreement about that. I like the suggestion for some kind of a citizen task force, perhaps, including Portland Cop Watch, the League Women Voters, Albina Ministerial Alliance, and others. So my reaction to what we've heard so far is that you've got some good ideas in your proposal, but there's some pretty strong agreement in the community about ways to improve this. So my question is, you know, do you feel that way? Do other council members feel that way, and what would you recommend as the next steps?
I may speak before the audit, if you don't mind, because I am reminded of 2010, when there was a very similar hearing to this, and I remember it particularly because my father fell downstairs and died, and I was not able to go to his funeral because of the importance of this very issue, and I was needed to be the third vote to say that we should set up the task force, and we should be looking at all the things that we could do. And I know you've put an enormous amount of work into this, the citizens' review board folks have also. The difference with the focus groups that you've had over the last several months was that they weren't open to the public, to listen in on the discussion, whereas the task force that we had in 2010 was. And in that process, Commissioner Leonard worked with Auditor Levon Griffin-Velayd to decide who should be on the stakeholder group. He and she both participated, and it didn't take all that long, because we gave them, I think it was, League Women Voters will remind me, it wasn't a very long process, because I think they met once a week for three weeks to come back with a proposal. And I'm wondering, even if the proposal comes back as exactly what you have, maybe it won't, if you would be willing to do that kind of a process of bringing stakeholders around a table and having meetings which people could observe but not comment on because of the work of the task force.
These conversations have been going on for over a year, and I think that the proposal that I brought here today is addressing some very immediate needs. We had an executive work session, we discussed three options. You all suggested that we have the consolidated model, which we started to put together the pieces of that. We had a meeting with the citizen review committee to explain that concept and how the pieces would have to come together, they could weigh in at the ground level of that concept, and that decision was dropped, and so I have brought this as a substitute, as one of the other ideas that was discussed at that session. If you would like to continue a broader conversation around these issues, I'm happy for you to do that. You are the policymakers. If we're going to have broad changes to the system, it will come from you. It will not come from me. I do not set policy, I do not have a vote on council, and so if you all would like to continue those conversations, which I understood that there is interest in continuing those conversations, that I think that those should go on, but I do think we have some immediate needs that we need to address, and that's what these changes that we brought today do. And so, for example, the way that the cases would be handled, to move those through the system more quickly, we do need to have the authority and code to do that, for the, have the more serious cases stay with Internal Affairs and independent police review, and the less serious cases be handled at the supervisory level. That all has to be put into code, to have the appeals, the frequency of appeals heard. I mean, we could schedule 11 people to come three or four times in a month, I don't think that's going to work. I think the three-member panels address that immediate need to increase the frequency. We have a backlog logged today through June of next year. So taking time to do a larger thing probably would have to be done in parallel to the proposal that is in front of you today.
I do appreciate that you went back and made some changes after the public forum that we had in North Portland. The problem is that we've heard yet again from everybody that they don't support what you've put forward as the policy choice. So, and I hear you that we need to manage the system differently. I mean, they're very concerned about the three-member panel. We did hear some people who thought that that might be sufficient, but then it was pointed out that with the current members of the CRC, that there might be the possibility that there wouldn't be enough difference of opinion. And I know, here we are, the three of us who are staying here at 7:00 at night, if we wanted to vote on this tonight, we would have to all three be unanimous. You can't have two people making a decision that the whole body is supposed to make. So I think your suggestion is wise to continue the hearing, as to whether we continue it to have more comments on this proposal, or whether you'd be willing to look at a rapid process, because these are all things that we've been discussing for a very long time.
Yes, they are.
So that was why I was asking Mr. Tsever to kind of speed up your initial presentation, because although there are definitely always new people coming and participating, there's a lot of folks here who've been at this for a very long time.
Well, I like your suggestions a lot, Commissioner, and again, I heard a lot of agreement here in the room, not only that you've made some progress in the proposal that you'd felt, but that there are a relatively short list of other issues that need to be properly aired with stakeholders and perhaps changed. I'm not persuaded the three-member panels are the right size. I've heard good suggestions here that increasing the size of the CRC and having five-member panels might be a compromise that more people would be willing to accept. I don't know if that's getting it right or not, but I think we're close, given what we've heard, again, from, you know, from fairly diverse group of folks that were able to speak tonight, not to mention the ones that weren't here, but to have this much agreement between the AMA, Cop Watch, League Women Voters, the CRC themselves, you know, and other folks that have paid a lot of attention to this issue, you know, I deeply respect the people that have come here today, and people like TJ Browning have been talking to me about these issues for a very long time. So I think there's the opportunity here for a pretty high level of agreement about reforms and changes, so I'm optimistic about that, not simply, you know, thinking that a task force could make something out of a mess. This isn't a mess.
Right. I would agree that it's three or four issues, but the one I want to add to your list is the issue of looking at the whole timeline and finding out where the other blocks are. The one I've questioned is, why does the chief need to have two weeks to make his or her decision? That seems completely out of whack with the nine-member body having to come together to make theirs. So I think you've encapsulated the things, a list of five or less of things that we would ask the stakeholders.
Standard review is a little gnarlier, but those are all good issues to address. Steve, any comments or guidance?
Well, my comment is, there, I don't share with your optimism. I don't think that there will ever be a proposal on this issue that has consensus support. I think there's too wide a variety of views and too much passion on the issue. Three judge panels, I have to say, to be honest, to me, that's what the Courts of Appeals in the United States judicial system have. That didn't strike me as inherently wrong, and it seems to be much easier to get three people to meet periodically than to get 11 or even five. I was interested in the fact that the current CRC members did not see a problem with having public comment at the appeals, and it's like, with some point, like a refresher on why we thought that that was, why the auditor thought it was important to delete that. I did have a question for Constantine and the auditor, which is, how many people applied to be on the CRC the last time there were openings?
Around 18.
How many?
18.
And how many openings were there?
Three.
Good, that's helpful. Well, so, it is late, and both the folks that are paid to be here and the folks that came here would like some clarity about where we go next, so I want to suggest we continue this hearing. And so the question is, when can we continue it to that we won't run into the problem that we ran into today, because that would certainly be outrageous. So is there a date coming up where we could put this back on the council calendar, and in the meantime, perhaps look at the question of some kind of a task force? Thirty days, less than 30 days?
The next day we have all five commissioners in is September 29th.
Okay.
And that would be 3:00 p.m.
We're not here. Neither Constantine nor I are here.
What's that?
Neither, we're attending a conference of the National Association.
You need to be here. So September 29th doesn't work, what about a week after that?
Commissioner Saltzman and Novick are gone, some of that week.
That week?
Yes.
So what about the week of the 10th?
I don't have any room on that next week.
You mean, we've got full council calendars both days?
The 12th and the 13th, yes. Mm-hmm.
Okay, let's look at the weekend.
Perhaps we might as well, in the meantime, set up the stakeholder group.
We might want to have a stakeholder group in the meantime. So here's what we're going to do, folks. We're not going to pick that date tonight. We're going to continue this hearing indefinitely, but in the meantime, we're probably going to appoint a stakeholder group. So bear with us, we'll give that plenty of time for people to know when this gets continued to, but we won't try to figure that out right here this evening. Thank you all. We're going to conclude this hearing for now and adjourn.